Good evening, this is the April 9th, 2019 regularly scheduled meeting of the East Long Meadow Town Council. We'll open the meeting now with a pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
During our moment of silence, we ask that you keep our servicemen and women around the globe as well as our first responders in your thoughts. Pursuant to Mass General Law, this meeting is being audio and videotaped. If there's anyone else present in the audience doing the same, please identify yourselves. Right now, it's a pretty thin audience, so I think it's safe to assume we're set. Mr. Florence, anything under public comments?
Not for tonight.
Okay. Councillors, anything under council comments? Moving quickly to the purpose, we'll skip your managers' report for now and we'll go right to our five o'clock schedule for our merged into our normal agenda, a budget discussion with the school department. So that said, Mr. Ficero and Mr. Smith?
Do you want a motion to go out of order?
Yep. I will do that. Let me just finish Ms. Blair and Mr. Thompson. I have a motion to go out of order to move to the school department budget discussion.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. I think, well, Mr. Smith's going to hand out a worksheet for us all and then I'll kind of explain the two sections of this we have to complete.
It's good news, George. Best news I've heard all day.
You're being tough on us. I'm sorry, you're being tough on us. It's already completed for you.
Thanks. It's on time.
If I could just alert you to the first page of the cover sheet to kind of explain our presentation tonight. If you look at that cover sheet, it's really divided into three sections. The first section is our contractual level services, which is 2.63. You see that in the last column, the far right. Our second section we're going to discuss is our new budget request, which is an added .83. So if you add the 2.63 to the .83, you see that that request brings us to 3.46, and that's in the green section. At the bottom of the green section is some thinking creatively that we've been doing, because you know, every year, the budget is different. It's unique. And we're trying to be creative and coming to the town council with the way of looking appropriating funds for our budget without using town funding. So we're trying to be creative as much as possible. So our first section then is to begin with our level services of 2.63. Ms. Blair or Mr. Smith?
Sure. So the contractual obligation or level services, which is 2.63, is a little bit higher than you've probably seen in previous years, and that was due to a few things which actually are somewhat outlined on the second page. We did obviously have contractual obligations, but our biggest unit, I believe, Unit A, was only a 1.5 percent increase. Unfortunately, though, what we did enter into or had to enter into was to make an adjustment in another contract, a paraprofessional contract, due to the fact that minimum wage is increasing. Now, when I say that, since this is a public meeting, they were not being paid minimum wage, but we had agreed that we would keep a certain ratio or at least negotiate if minimum wage started to increase as now it will for the next five years. And so that was something that we took care of in the fall. So it impacted not only this current year's budget, so that was something that we had to look within our budget this year and make sure that we could make that happen, and then will obviously impact again next year's budget. The other item there is a reduction of the state health grant that we've had probably for the last eight, 10 years. There is a grant that will come in its place and we will apply for, but basically what they're doing here is they're removing the ability in this new grant to pay for any personnel. Now it has to move into all services that you're offering. And I think that's roughly $40,000?
Yes, about $43,000.
Right now, in the grant that's expiring at the end of this fiscal year, does incorporate some of our nursing pay and a few stipends, yes. So that takes us through the sort of contractual obligations or the level services. Is there anything that you want to add?
No, just to add that in the paraprofessional contract, there was language in there that if, you know, minimum wage was increased, that we would open up those negotiations. So, you know, we were obligated to do so. And again, the Unit A was the 1.5 percent, but as everyone remembers, it's not just a simple 1.5. There's a scale, so they go over and then down or up, if you want to think about it monetarily. So, and then lastly, that reduction of the ESH grant. Those are the three big items.
Actually, one that's not listed in there, but does have an impact. We have noon aids, actually we're changing their name to lunch and recess monitors, and we have them at all our elementary schools. And so we also, even though they're not necessarily a representative group or representative group or collective group, we did look at that pay schedule as well. That's both impacting this year, it's a much smaller group than any of our collective bargaining groups.
And they play a significant role, of course, monitoring all of the students out there.
Right, yeah. You think about it, when they're at recess, they're our first line of security.
Sarah Monocleman?
She is hiding in back. I mean, she's prison in back.
That's why, I just wanted to make sure we're timed up in the worksheet, that's all. So, thank you, Sarah.
You didn't think you would miss this, did you? You didn't think she was going to miss this, did you?
She canceled everything on her pending adjustment sheet here.
Leave the kids at home, we don't want to see this.
I mean, you're more than welcome to join us up here, Sarah, if you wish.
So that's kind of...
If I can ask, do you have any other units that you're involved with right now in terms of looking at increases?
So we are, we've just completed, we have a tentative agreement with our custodians. And there's 18 members there. And we have a tentative agreement as of yesterday with our secretary of group. I believe there are either 17 or 18 members there.
18 secretaries as well.
So both groups have to go now and pass it through their entire group, and then hopefully, if all things work out, we'll get it on maybe one of those contracts on for the 22nd meeting to approve as a school committee.
And the potential increases included in here.
I think we can a little bit, but, you know, yes.
I'd say a quick question to the chair. So the adjustment that you made for the pairs is, since we're scaling up with minimum wage, so is this something you're going to adjust each year, or did you do a one-time adjustment this year?
No, what we did was, we actually did a adjustment, there were two years remaining on their contract, and so we adjusted the pay scale accordingly, so that there were increases at certain intervals over those two years.
Okay, so now you don't have to do it five years in a row?
No, we'll be back in negotiations.
And then you'll just build that into the next CVA?
We'll have to, you know, make sure that we stay ahead of it again.
That makes sense.
Any more questions on the contractual services or level services budget 2.63? Okay, if we could then move to our new budget requests that are not included, you see it's a .83 increase. It includes our socio-emotional teachers at Meadowbrook, a socio-emotional teacher at the high school, and in that first page now, the pink, the green section, instructional technology specialist at Mountain View and Maple Shire, they would share it, and a curriculum renewal increase of $50,000. Now, we met, we were back here about a month ago, we kind of mentioned that we tried to stay thematically, that we're not going to come to you with a long list of varied and different items. So we really worked hard to pare this list down and only come to you with what we actually absolutely need, and that's what you have here in front of you. All sectors, the socio-emotional teacher, instructional technology specialist, the renewal increase, have all been very successful in the past. We have data to show that they've been very successful, so now we're trying to stay with that same theme and increase it. So I don't know if anyone wants to add anything about the socio-emotional teachers first, Meadowbrook and at the high school.
So last year, some of the discussion that we had was specific to...
This page here, please. Middle School, page here. I was going to get to that. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Chair.
I jumped into, Rich, I apologize.
So if you don't mind turning to the ones that are supporting the whole child. So we had started to look at as a district over the last two years, really, how we do a better job of integrating, not making it something that we do separately, but integrating how we help students learn socially and emotionally, and then also bring support where there may be situations that are beyond, say, things that we normally experience in the classroom. We spend during the school year probably 70% of the time with students outside of their family life, and so we're really tasked as schools as almost being the coordinating social agency, if you will. Many of the other social agencies work through us to help support families and children. And so we started our socio-emotional program at Birchland Park Middle School this year, because what we were seeing is how often we could work with our students through grades, pre-K through five, and then when they hit the middle school grades, we might still have them in sixth, but generally somewhere between sixth, eighth, or that summer of eighth grade, we had referrals to go to Adda District. And most of those referrals over the last few years had a component that was dealing with social and emotional education or support. So this year, we have a socio-emotional teacher who has been pretty incredible. Began the year really with no students on his caseload per se. Birchland approached it where, as he came into the school, he started working with teachers and building some of their capacity to handle certain things in the classroom, and then started consulting with guidance staff and the adjustment counselor there, and then it didn't take long to start to build a caseload. But I think those, that relationship building, it really took place in the month of September and October, really paid dividends, because not only are we seeing, so now I'm in the chart as the yellow band. Just the comparison, February to February of both years, you're seeing fewer disciplinary notes coming down from teachers, which means that more things are happening and being managed in the classroom. You have a 35% reduction. You're seeing fewer suspensions, six up till through February 2019 to 20 last year, so that's a 70% reduction. And SAM meetings are student assistance meetings, and that's an increase, and the reason we see that as a positive is because that's requested by teachers. So they're working the internal process of how do we come together as a team around this student and this issue? And so we're seeing that as a positive. Generally, we do our student surveys at the end of the year, but Birchland wanted to take a look at, given that they had such a successful fall, where certain things were with their staff and their students, and these are student questions. So you see, overall, I feel safe at BPMS, that was 91%. I enjoy being with this staff, 90%. I believe that the staff have attempted to make positive relationships with me, 91%. And that last one's really key to us. And all the surveys throughout all our schools, we have a question around, do you as a student have a staff member to whom you can go and problem solve and know that, trust that things will be handled the right way? It's more articulated in the actual survey, but that's the gist.
Looking at this, I guess, you know, the immediate goal, looking at this right now, is that it's a better managed building. There's less disruption, both in the classroom and in the building. It means better educational for everybody. The second goal, which we'd love to come back to a year from now and show to you, is we're hoping to prevent residential placements, which is really a large ticket item. What's the average about Valley West? What's Valley West?
Valley West runs about $60,000.
$60,000.
17 students.
So if we can come back to a year from now and say, the teacher at Meadowbrook, that teacher at Birchland Park Middle School, teacher at the high school, has prevented this from happening, what a home run it would be for us. So there's two goals there. Immediate goal is a better managed building in classrooms, less disruption. The future goal is, can we keep those students who we pay that much money in our school system because of these type of educational opportunities with the SEL teachers, they call them?
So that blue chart really starts to get at that, because that's where the socio-emotional teacher is now actually working directly with these students. So you have eight students that are coming from various grades with different subjects, core academics, there are six of them now as of February and March, they're getting their core academics with the socio-emotional teacher. So what that means is, the socio-emotional teacher, this is where September and October were really valuable, is working with those content area teachers, getting what the lesson plans are, and then starting to implement for those students. It's actually, I want to talk about differentiated instruction. It's pretty incredible, because you're dealing with all three grade levels possibly and many different content areas. And so we have six there, and then he runs or consults with 12 students for mentoring, and, you know, that can be anything from dealing with different family issues or school issues. It could be dealing or working around just organization as a whole, setting goals, that type of thing. And what's not on here, but I've witnessed numerous times this year, he runs two lunch groups. Students that, some have sought him out, because they don't feel comfortable in the cafeteria, and he's working where they're getting closer and closer to the cafeteria. It's pretty incredible. And they're very talkative at the table that they eat at, and they don't eat at in different rooms. They're eating in one of the alcoves, if you know Birchland, that is off the cafeteria. There's a table out there before you get out to the courtyard, go to the door to the courtyard. And they're happy, they're having fun, and it is social, which is really what lunch should be for all our students.
And we knew going in that this was going to be a work in progress. I mean, it's a new position. The day and age, today's day and age of the school is very, very different from when we all went to school and the issues that the students are dealing with. So we were all quite impressed with these numbers, and it was really very reassuring to know that we're going in the right direction with these types of positions.
If I can ask a question, Ms. Blair? You said 17 students currently at Valley West. Are there other placements, other students in other placements?
Yes, there are.
Eagle Hill. Twain is another place.
So for socio-emotional?
Twain is, yeah, I would say Twain has a variety of resources, but it's, this is not a clinical term, but it's sort of your step-up school to Valley West?
Yep.
So if we go least restrictive?
So let's say 20 students, they're sprinkled over the whole K to 12 spectrum?
Mm-hmm, yes, that's correct.
At $60,000 each.
If they're at Valley West.
Some of the others are bigger.
Twain's a little bit less expensive, because that's part of the Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative.
Eagle Hills more expensive.
Yeah, and there's other facilities that are...
Correct, yeah. Not as many as you would think. I know you know that, but sometimes they're not enough, exactly, which is all the more reason, if we can build our skills within the schools and keep more of our students here, similar to what we talked about, although for different reasons, around the intensive needs program last year. You know, we have students now that are staying with us from pre-K all the way to grade 12. And actually, just a side note, State Treasurer got to visit that classroom last Friday.
And she was very impressed.
She was impressed, yeah. So that was nice. It's a great vote of confidence, when families want their children to stay in our schools given the needs that we're supporting. Other questions on this?
Instructor, instructional technology specialist, I think you have a handout there, Mr. Smith?
I do. So if you turn the page, I wanted to give you an idea of what this looks like. This is not his actual colorful landing page, because I thought this would give you just some idea of how the instructional technology specialist at the high school is working with both colleagues, students, and in many cases, and I think, Mr. Ford, this was your question a couple of meetings ago, with the IT department. He's actually bridging all three. And so he can do some of the sort of easy technology support, but obviously, the network and so forth, that stays with IT, but he can be a first line of defense. But really, what he's looking to do, as you kind of go through this, he's looking to continue to help our teachers be innovative and use a lot of the tools that they have around them. You know, right now, although we're not a one-to-one district, we're starting to gain pretty good traction to get there. And so they have much more access to Chromebooks and computers, and actually, we just, last year, bought a set of those virtual reality goggles. And so all of these type of things, our instructional technology specialist is providing guidance in how you lesson plan with this, this new equipment, and what you can do. And so as you go through this, I think at the bottom of the page where it starts to get cut off, he's created technology cafes, and so if people are not bringing the issue per se to him, he's bringing these different ideas to them. And he's had, I think to date, about 20 technology cafes. I captured 16 through 19 on the next page, and it gives you an idea of what he's starting to do in these tech cafes. And the 16 through 19 really is creating their Google website and what they can start to do there. Earlier, technology cafes were ways that they can start to integrate either Google Classroom or certain specific sites. You know, and he's not staying just specific to Google, he's looking for other ways. There's another way to, say, incorporate a video into a presentation, and it's something that is now far easier than, say, what happened in the norm. That may become something that if you can't immediately get it into a tech cafe, he blasts it out into the Google Classroom, and all the teachers in the high school are part of his Google Classroom. So when he blasts it out, they get an email, they can start to look at it. If they immediately understand how to do that new activity, then they're off and running. If they don't, they can schedule time where he'll actually come in and they'll team teach. They plan the lesson together, and then they team teach, and so he hasn't lost that direct contact with students, which is actually a really great thing.
And our final increase is for curriculum renewal, I think it's for $50,000.
Right, so this is something that we looked at last year in our budget. We have a five-year cycle for curriculum renewal, and this was something that the school committee had established probably now close to six years ago. And it was really great thinking by the school committee to do so, because often, school districts have a curriculum renewal cycle, but they don't necessarily have any funding behind that curriculum renewal cycle. So it's great to investigate, make sure that you're identifying the best possible resources for your students, but if you can't purchase any of those resources, then it's ultimately an exercise in frustration. So about five, six years ago, we established a line item of about $100,000, and what we're finding is, now that we're five, six years out, with the pace of, say, standards changing, most recently, we had social studies change, and so they're beginning to realign to the state standards. We're trying to accomplish, say, two large departments and one smaller department within that cycle, but we're finding that everything that they identify, the $100,000 really is not covering that. And so then we have to prioritize and figure out how we're going to get the resources needed.
And although a lot of that may now go to textbooks, a lot of it now goes to licensing, online licensing for the curriculum, so both that.
So bringing you back to the front page?
I just want to mention one more increase, which is a whole separate line items from the budget, and I don't think we have a copy, is that the school committee is, and I'll read it, "We respectfully request an increase to the annual stipend paid to the school committee members," there's four, "we're asking from $1,250 to $3,500. An increase to school committee chair, where there's one, from $1,750 to $4,000." So we are asking for an increase in our stipend, which is separate line item from the, this budget.
They have it in the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Monade. Okay, just wanted to kind of show all of our pieces all at once, so we stay organized in our presentation.
Just bringing you back to the first page, something that Mr. Ficero had said right at the outset, one of the things that obviously we want to always be very cognizant of is, especially in a year like this where we're asking for a little bit more than previous years, are there revenue sources that may offset some of this? And thankfully, Governor Baker, last few years, and it may continue as he continues to look at the recommendations around foundation spending, has increased Chapter 70, and the legislature has supported those increases over the last few years. So our Chapter 70 increase coming into the town, starting at the bottom there in FY18, went up 4.77 percent two years ago, last year, 6.18 percent, and the governor's proposal at the moment is to increase it again by 7.36 percent, which is around $828,000, which would be significant. So that would come in, given that the town is always very supportive of the schools, that Chapter 70 money flows into the town. Then Medicaid reimbursement is something actually that, I'm not sure how aware the general public is about this, because it's something that's been around probably 20, 20 years.
Yeah, I would say back with...
But it wasn't something that was a significant funding source, if you will, over the last, let's say, 15 years, but recently, it started to really creep up. If you look on the right side in the green area, where FY16, and this is money that comes back to the town due to services that school personnel are providing students, services are usually attached through an IEP, and so these services can be charged back to Medicaid, and then this reimbursement comes back to the town. So going from the bottom line there, FY16 is about $147,000, FY17, $238,000, FY18, $242,000, and this is an estimate, we're thinking FY19's going to be up around $250,000. And starting July 1, that law is actually expanding, so it's going to increase services that actually can be reimbursed by Medicaid. It won't just be governed by the IEP. Services that may be delivered through a 504 will also be considered. So we're expecting that to increase as well. And Lower Pioneer Valley Educational Collaborative coordinates the reporting of this for us, and actually, they do it for all seven districts. And then we pay a fee for them to coordinate and report, and then that reimbursement flows back into the general fund, I believe. Is that correct, Sarah?
Right, and that fee is, is it $8,000, $11,000?
$12,000, I thought.
$12,000, okay, it went up, $8 to $12, yeah, because as the monies go up, so does the, yeah, the fee associated with the school department incurs that expense.
So to stay with the positive, if you were to add the increase from the Chapter 7 revenue, $828,292, to the estimated amount of Medicaid, you'd come up with $1,078, which would cover completely the 3.46 that we're asking for. I know it's extremely idealistic, but we just feel like we're trying to be creative, trying to work with you to get the, realize the budget that we need and give you alternative ways of funding it. And these are realistic, too, these are realistic numbers.
So, Rich, you're saying if you get that 7.36, which is the governor's proposal?
$28, yeah.
And that reimbursed money, I mean, that's an expenditure you come up with, but you get reimbursed later, right? So that's sort of, you spend in the front and you get reimbursed later?
You'll get this reimbursement this year.
This 2.50 is coming in now, that comes in quarterly. This $250 is coming in now. That comes in quarterly, I believe.
And that covers your whole increase, really?
Because we're asking for one point.
That was going to be the question I was going to ask, what your 7.36 increase in Chapter 70 money, how would that impact your overall number? So that's basically level service, right?
The $828 figure?
No, if you take your 7.36 and that $250, that takes your whole 3.46.
Correct.
That's a level service budget.
Right.
If that's the numbers that we get, right?
Right.
Well, it's not.
I mean, it offsets.
The sources are different, but it offsets.
Sources versus use, yeah.
It offsets.
The sources would offset what you're requesting.
Correct.
That's different from level service.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean. It's the same, the same dollar figure.
It's a wash.
It's a wash. That's what I was getting.
It's $1,049,000 you'll see on the front page, the grand total for the 3.46 percent. So, that's what we're referring to, that it would cover all of that.
Gotcha. All right. That's what I was asking. Thanks.
Yeah, I mean, a year from now, we may not have this type of alternative funding, but we feel it's here now. Let's present it. Let's have you think about it.
As it relates to social, emotional teachers, you presently have one at Berchley. You're asking for one for Meadowbrook and the high school.
High school, right.
Is it fair to assume that in FY21, you'd want to dress out the other two schools that are shared, or one each?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. We actually have a program currently at Mountain View that we think with some additional training, we might be able to have that be our social, emotional program. So then, that would cover us. You'd still have students similar to, because we have certain specialized programs at Maple Shade and certain specialized programs at Mountain View. And so, as students leave Meadowbrook, if they have specific IEPs, they might go to one or the other.
I think you're right, Mr. Smith. We are trying to keep with thematic theme to you. It's when we come back year to year, you can pitch what we're asking for and see if there's a consistency to our question.
Well, in that specific circumstance, yes.
And I'm sure the instructional technology specialist at Mountain View maybe she's asking for, I'm sure Berchley Park or Meadowbrook may ask for it next year.
And the, something that I didn't mention is that instructional technology specialist becomes so key, given that two years ago, Department of Elementary and Secondary Education put in new standards that really run K through 12 for digital literacy and computer science. And as you know, especially at the elementary level, our teachers have to be someone who teaches all subject areas. And then, you throw on all these new standards around digital literacy and computer science, any assistance that we can provide, such as an instructional technology specialist, would be certainly very welcome, and I think very advantageous, not only for our teachers, but for all our students.
Now, we do have seven retiree teachers this year. We do anticipate about $130,000 savings there. I will say, it's pretty close to a wash with contractual obligations also for outsourcing transportation, which we took on last year. We talked about that. So I just, I know you all get curious about retirees, so there are two pairs as well.
Well, it's good to see that the governor's proposal is almost a percent and a quarter above what was realized last year. And I hope that's in response to the other things you're alluding to, such as Desi's mandates around social, emotional learning and digital literacy, because it doesn't matter which town you're talking about, the burdens to, you know, put in place the requirements when they're not funded is troublesome for most places.
And as you know, they use the mechanism of the state assessment system to sort of make that happen.
The slides and?
Yeah. So, we all, everybody went online this year, so you had to have enough computers to make sure that you could test all your students.
In the original proposal for the budget, the last budget meeting you had, with the additional Chapter 70 revenue projected in your revenue numbers?
I included that in the revenue, yeah. And I did include in the original budget presentation all the 3.46 percent of the total.
Is there anything that we need to review that they have on the capital? I mean, I know we kind of went over that quickly with, in general, but.
I have the capital and budget. We can just, you all should have.
Yeah, we have it in our, there was a couple items with the replacement of the modular trailer classroom was the biggest one.
And that's, we're recommending bonding.
Bonding for the two elementary projects, correct?
Who was that, for the?
It was a total of 1.3.
The Mountain View modular?
Yeah, 1.3 million to bond. Sarah, is that the money?
I believe so.
I don't, I didn't open my notebook, but that sticks in my head.
Yeah, it says it's bonding, door replacement.
The high school is asbestos, the removal of the athletic.
$24,000, yeah, $24,000.
That was under regular capital budget. And then, recommended bonding was replacement of the modulators at Mountain View.
Okay.
And door replacement at Maple Shade.
At Maple Shade?
Yes.
Fifty thousand.
And when we met with Treasurer Goldberg two weeks ago, and was it Mr. Sullivan from the, or Smith, from the?
Donovan and McDonald.
McDonald, okay. From the MSBA. Can't talk to him. What I took away from that meeting is something that Mr. Thompson asked about the catch-22 of keeping your building in such good shape that you, like, shoot yourself in the foot. But I was surprised at the treasurer's response, that the expectation is to maintain a building as best you can and not let it fall into such disrepair in the hopes that you're going to get invited in, because that's not how they look at it. So, it does look like we have to keep looking at electrical and the roofs, the roof systems, and whatever else is on Mr. Finney's hot list of things to watch.
And actually, to that end, we're going to be hopefully working with National Grid this summer.
Yes.
To take a look at our transformer. So, the large concern, or in quotations that's all over our statement of interest, the MSBA imminent failure, is because the transformer's running at a much higher temperature than it's supposed to. And we're hoping that National Grid can give us some possible resolutions that we might be able to try to mitigate that and then continue on as we hopefully move into the process with the MSBA. We've already done a number of panel replacements and sort of rebalanced things. So, I think we've sort of hit the wall on that, so now it's looking at the transformer.
Good.
Oh, yes. There's a little bit of a celebration I submitted. Electronic in the statement of interest today.
Well, I did the hard part. Trying to get that finger to move was ridiculous.
You have to sign.
You have to sign it electronically.
With a mouse. So, it looks like second grade. I could have done it in crayon. It's just like, terrible. But Richard was right there with me.
I hate that we had the hard part.
Working the touchpad challenge.
Does council have anything else for the schools?
Okay.
Thank you so much for your attention. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're having our public budget hearings the 22nd of April, just so that you're aware of that. I lost. 22nd of April.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all very much.
Great. Pre-K to two.
To second.
Yeah. So, it's like four-year-old kindergarten format. So, we.
Do we have an executive session today?
We do not.
I was just wondering if we did.
Yeah.
I was going to say, we have 20 minutes.
I know. We're, it's 5:40-ish, and we really can't start our 6 o'clock meeting yet.
No, it's a meeting that starts at 5:00.
Okay, so we handle it.
It's a regular business.
All right, well.
But you don't mind if, she's been working on her lap out there at all these meetings with.
You don't like to cheer?
Apparently, it's broken. It's like, it almost falling off of it.
Look really short right now.
Well, in my world, cheer.
It's fine. It's hard to work on your lap. All right, so I'll take, entertain a motion to move back into a regular order of agenda.
So moved.
Same has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. We're back to manager's report.
So, again, I apologize. Last Friday, I was so deep in stuff that I didn't think about the manager's report until it was late, and I couldn't really say, because I was going to a great event. It was the veterans fundraiser for their memorial, memorial committee. They had a Cher impersonator, an Elvis impersonator, and a gentleman that sings like Bobby Darin kind of music, and it was sold out. It was a success. I saw Councilor O'Connor there. So, it was a great night.
It was, yeah.
And a success for them. They made quite a bit of money.
Did a great job.
So, yeah, they really did. I've distributed tonight work charts for the library, the health department, the building department, and the public works fleet schedule, so you all have that. If there are work charts that are missing, please let me know. I think after tonight, the individual departments that are coming up will have theirs. And if after that, there's some missing, just let me know, and I'll make sure that we get them. The, I received a letter last week from the planning board. They're looking for participants for the master plan committee that they want to form. They're asking for, I'll advertise this probably in a press release in a newspaper, someone from the planning board, public works department, council on aging, citizen participant, business owner, and the town council. So, if somebody's interested in that, that would be, that'll be a long-term, very detailed project. And I've been working with Connie on how to sort of, you know, tackle it. I think she lost the oomph to keep it going, but she's back on track. She's, may present tonight an outline of how she's going to address each category in, she sent the planning board a bunch of samples from other towns.
Of master plans?
Yeah, their master plans. And I said, just take one of those indexes and use it as your outline. So, easy enough to get it started, and then each, each item can be addressed separately, you know, work at it. A lot of the information is already there.
Just have to gather it.
The size of the town doesn't change. The recreation areas are defined. Maybe you want to find some more, but it's a plan that will come together. Today, we, I received a call from Governor Baker's office inviting the council president and I to meet with him to share challenges East Long Meadow is facing. We'll certainly share good news as well. But if you all think of anything, please let us know so that we can, yep.
That $1.1 million from the police, for the police department?
That's already on my list.
Where's our money?
That's already on my list.
Okay.
So, that's going to be May 2nd?
May 2nd.
It's a Thursday, I think?
Springfield.
In Springfield, in the Springfield office. Dates to remember, the Lions' first annual spring fishing derby is this coming Saturday. April 17th is Virginia Robins' retirement reception at the library, and the 20th is the egg hunt at Heritage Park. And there was a little bit of controversy about egg hunt versus Easter egg hunt, and it was on Facebook. It brought a huge amount of people to notice it, and she is 10 times as many people as she had expected, the rector. So, it will be a big success. Lots and lots of eggs. That's my report for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes. Actually, I didn't ask the council if you have questions on the manager's report. Okay, approval of minutes. The first one before you is the March 12 open session minutes. We set those aside last week for some additional comments or edits.
Yep. I brought the comments to Jeannie, and she incorporated them, just to share with everybody. The original version says, Councilor Anderson, this is regarding the proposed zone change over on P's, said he had, let me read exactly, "In addition, Councilor Anderson does not agree that having a solar farm next to a prison is beneficial." Well, I qualified that because, just to be sure, I re-listened to the minutes. I mean, it's, so it's more accurate. Solar farm next to a Connecticut prison is beneficial hypothetically if an occupant of the prison escaped and hid in a solar, in a solar facility in East Long Meadow, then what? East Long Meadow police would cross state lines, and there would be a need for a cross-state agreement. So that was the additional clarification I want to add.
Any other, I think, any other additions or corrections to the March 12 minutes? I'll entertain a motion for approval.
I get a motion to approve the amended, I'm sorry, do you want a motion? Propose a motion to accept the amended minutes for March 12, 2019?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the March 12 open session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. That motion carries. Minutes are approved. Moving to the March 26 open session minutes, and those are in your packet as well. Are there any questions, comments, corrections? Nearing none, I'll entertain a motion to accept those minutes.
I'll make a motion to accept the open session minutes of the March 26 meeting.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to accept the March 26 open session minutes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Motion carries, and those minutes are accepted as well. Moving on to item seven, communication correspondence and announcements. In your packet, I have attached a letter that was sent to me by email from Kate Delaney Chung. And the gist of the email was that she had done some considerable thinking about finding a middle ground for the current bylaw around commercial vehicles. I responded back to her that the council is in the midst of a budget session, and we had agreed to keep our agendas as light as possible except for emergency or time-sensitive issues, and that we would certainly hear her concerns or her thoughts as soon as we had a budget in hand, and she was certainly amenable to that. So, it's an FYI to the council. You have it in your packet to take a look at when you're able to. Number eight is public hearings, and those are time-sensitive at 6:30 and 6:45, so we are not able to do that. We can continue to item nine, orders of the day.
I want a motion.
You want to go back? We have to go back out of order again?
Can I make a motion then to go out of order to, for, continue with 9A and even after, until we hit the 6:30 time, and then, for purposes, then to immediately go back into the 6:30 public hearing, followed by the 6:45 public hearing?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to move out of order again to continue the agenda until we can, and get as far as we can until it's at 6 o'clock, and we could, at that point, continue with our department discussions. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. So, we are out of order, and we will move to orders of the day under licensing and approval of a BYOB bylaw and policy. That as well is in your packet. The licensing matter committee took up the issue of whether or not the town should have a bylaw around BYOB or stay silent, which is the status we have right now. And after some considerable discussion and looking at the law as it reads in Chapter 138, if there is a silence on the part of the community, there is always. if there is a silence on the part of the community, there is always the possibility of liability on the part of the municipality if an establishment exercises a BYOB and then something, some event goes amiss. And so the town could potentially be held liable. Those are the what-ifs, but to be on the safe side, after some discussion at the licensing committee matter, it was unanimous that the, we would send it to the bylaw committee with the instructions that we wanted a no BYOB policy. And so that has occurred as well. The bylaw committee met, and what is before you is the backup information, and I'll read it for the benefit of the viewers. The town of East Long Meadow has not adopted a BYOB policy, but does accept applications for one-day liquor licenses subject to the typical requirements as specified in the town's bylaws and in accordance with MGL Chapter 138. By exercising the privilege, and this disclaimer appears in multiple municipality bylaws and guidelines throughout Massachusetts, it's somewhat boilerplate, so we incorporate it because it seems to work successfully around the Commonwealth. By exercising the privilege of allowing patrons to BYOB, the business owner is potentially exposed to significant liability for injuries and damages to the person consuming alcohol or to others who are injured or damaged by the person consuming alcohol. Acceptance and exercise of BYOB will be deemed to be an acknowledgement of awareness of the potential liability. Business owners are encouraged, are encouraged the risk associated with exercising the privilege of BYOB and the appropriate precautions, including the liquor liability insurance mandated for liquor licenses in MGL 138, Section 12, to avoid injuries, damage, and liability to others with his or her legal advisor. The town of East Long Meadow and the town council, acting as the local licensing authority, shall not be liable to the business owners or to others if injury or damage shall result from the exercise of the BYOB practice. By allowing BYOB on the licensed premises, the business owner acknowledges that he, she understands and will comply with all applicable federal, state, and municipal laws and regulations set forth by the ABCC and licensing authority. So as we know, that needs, all of this needs to go to, if it's going to be a bylaw, it's got to go through the cycle of the two public hearings. So I am at, I don't have this paper. I need, I'm going to make this. Right, so I need someone to, within your orders of the day, approve a no BYOB policy for the town of East Long Meadow as presented to the council by the bylaw and licensing committees.
I'll make a motion to approve a no BYOB policy for the town as presented to the council by the bylaw and licensing subcommittees.
I'll second that motion.
Had the motion's been made and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Right now, so this will now, we'll go back to the clerk, and he will begin the notification process and put this into two subsequent readings. To the best of the town's knowledge, right now, there is only one establishment in town that routinely offers BYOB. We will reach out to that owner to make sure that she is aware that there will be public hearings so that she may come and speak, because if the bylaw passes, she will no longer be able to have that practice unless she approves, unless she applies for the one-day permit. But she also has to hold that license, I mean, insurance, and that's a significant premium, we're told by some of the restaurant owners in town. So, but I will make sure that as well. We know that informally, some of our spas and nail salons in town have started the practice of, as they offer services to a bridal party, let's say, or any, you know, birthday party, they're suggesting that you can BYOB. So we will do our very best to alert those establishments as well that this is, you know, this will affect, this passage will affect your practices going forward, so it behooves you to come to the public hearing and have your say. That's all I have on that one. All right, moving on to, unless there's other questions, anyone? No?
No, I would just say that there was much discussion at the licensing subcommittee. I believe you were there, Kathy?
Well.
Were you there?
No, it was.
I remember myself, you, Kathy Hood.
And Aldo, Mr. Fazio.
Oh, Aldo was there as well. Okay.
But there was significant discussion around the cost of the insurance, as well as if we promote BYOB, that is, it kind of puts the, our license owners at a disadvantage because they've taken the steps to properly license and insured and follow the rules and, you know, be an imbalance there. So that's a little of that history. Moving on to item 9A, number two, discussion of a fortune teller license, and I'm simply looking first to our backup here, is in the packet as well. That is pursuant to Title 20, Chapter 140, Section 185i. The Massachusetts general laws allows that a person may tell fortunes for money unless a license therefore has been issued by the, no person shall tell fortunes for money unless a license has been issued. This also was brought to the bylaw committee, and the bylaw committee recommended that we adopt as well this MGL into a bylaw and incorporate it. And so unless, because it's already present in the law, unless the council rejects that, it will go to the same process as the BYOB. And I'll also point out that in this case, it will not go to the licensing subcommittee because it falls under the category of entertainment license, and our current fee schedule for entertainment license is listed at $75. But the statute says the fee can be as small as $2 or as large as $50. So it was the feeling of the bylaw committee that since it's mandated at 50, we would have to take unnecessary steps or steps that are more work than they're worth to ask that the fee be 75. So that said, we'll just, the move would be to incorporate the MGL, wrap it into a bylaw, and then proceed with the hearings. So that said, unless you have questions, I'll entertain a motion to accept the recommendation of the bylaw committee to move the MGL wording regarding fortune teller licenses into the bylaw hearing process.
I'd be happy to read them, but you, so you want me to read two separate motions, one at a time?
Can I have that?
It looks like, it looks like there's two separate motions. Yes?
Yes. Yes, we should take them two distinctly at a time.
Okay. Separately.
All right. Motion to approve and accept the provisions of MGL 140, Section 1851, fortune teller license as presented by the bylaw committee.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Just for clarification, it's, it's Section 185i.
Aye, right.
Oh, sorry.
I know, it's confusing, because the capital I still looks like a one.
Yeah.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. Okay, so Mr. Florence, this also moves into the protocol for hearings. And then Mr. Ford again for the fee.
Okay, a motion to approve a licensing fee of $50 for a fortune teller license as presented to the council. Second.
That motion's been made and seconded, and if there's no discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. That motion also carries, and that's incorporated now into our fee schedule.
No idea.
And the rest will go to the bylaw. Okay, it is six oh something or other, four? I need to reflect.
You have department heads.
Department heads are here, so we can continue until our first hearing at 6:30 with the budget discussions with our department heads. And that said, the first on our agenda in this rotation is our emergency communications department.
Aren't you questioning?
And Mr. Brown is with, yes, Mr. Brown is here.
Brown?
No.
Burns.
Burns, I'm sorry, Mr. Burns. I said Brown, and I'm.
He was looking for Mr. Brown, too.
He's looking for, welcome, and we're all ears.
What, what number are we looking at on the budget? Is it 299?
299.
299? No, these are the extra ones so far. We'll just make a package. Is that it? Four?
Five. How many? You should have five. I have five. Lots of good information, Scott. Okay, so we're happy to listen.
So as you guys know, the emergency communications department's a relatively new department here in town. We just started operations with civilian dispatch on February 1st of this year. We have a staff of four full-time dispatchers besides myself, and then currently, we have four part-time dispatchers, and we're manning 24/7 operations for both police and fire and medical emergency calls. As far as our budget's concerned, from my understanding, it was only budgeted for a half-year last year, something like that, so that the growth that you do see in the budget is accounting for a full year with that budget. I did put together a pie chart, which you'll see, most of our, it shows that most of our expenses are going to salary. We do have some vendor expenses, software fees for some of the dispatching software that we use at the police department that accounts for proportion of that as well.
Is that recurring software fee, or is that a one-time?
There's, some of the software does have a recurring fee. There's annual license fees on those. So I budgeted for them in my budget versus the IT budget. There was some discussion about that going forward, as if it's under the dispatch budget, those costs should really be carried by us and not by the IT department on our budget.
Well, they will be covered by a grant.
Yeah, some of, yeah, some of our expenses are grant reimbursable through the 911 grant on some of the law, the license fees for the software. Not all of them, but certain ones that relate to EMD, the state will cover. The fire EMS ones are not. Same thing with the law enforcement side, so as long as it's specifically related to emergency medical dispatch, that's specifically covered under the state EMD grant.
Gotcha. So just for clarification, then, is this the gross number, or is this the net adjusted after the grants are applied?
No, the, you're talking about just the software?
I'm asking, yeah.
So software-wise, if it is covered by the grant, if you remember when Ryan did his budget, we're rolling as many of the grant, of the, of the software pieces out of people's budgets and into the IT budget, so we have a clear number of what IT is. If it's, however, grant-funded, then we kind of need to keep it where it is.
Makes sense.
So it's not, it's not reflective of all of his software as far as grants are concerned. Some of them probably are under the IT budget, correct? Yeah. So did that answer your question? No. I can tell by the look on your face.
Maybe I didn't ask you well. So this is the gross amount of the licensing fees they're asking for for FY 2020?
57,360.
Right.
Yes, what you're saying, yes.
Not inclusive of what you may recover through grants?
Correct. We don't offset it, yeah.
Do you have any idea what those grants could be?
I did identify in the grants last, from fiscal 19 to fiscal 20, about 19,000 increase in grants. So last year, we got about 43,586. This year, on the support and incentive grant, this year, we're getting 50,675. And then on the EMD grant, last year was about 22,18976. And this year, with the addition of the wireless calls and a modest increase from the state, we're getting about 34,72209, for a total of 85,39709 in state grant money.
Very good. Thank you. That's great.
Some of the other things there, I did identify some savings just through our meticulous detail in the selection of software for the EMD. For example, one program that we were looking at had a price tag of almost $74,000, and just doing our due diligence and our homework, the software that we selected was significantly less than that, about $45,000. So that, you know, in essence, represents about a $20,000 savings to the town, in addition to training costs, because most of the people we hired have training already on the software program that we're using. So if you will, I selected the more popular software program, and that helps keep some of the costs down as well.
And Scott, if you would mind, wouldn't mind just repeating again, how many staff you have? I missed that part.
Yeah, we have four full-time dispatchers outside of myself, and then four part-time dispatchers.
So that, two, so two individuals, whether full or part, are available, clock around? Is that how it's working?
On the first and second shift, we try to staff two now at all times. On the overnight shift, just because it's On the overnight shift, just because the call volume isn't there, we can.
Go back with one.
Keep with one. You know, obviously, I'll be watching the call volume. If that picks up and there's a need for a second person on the overnights, then I'll certainly make the argument to Denise and the council that, you know, we need to look at our staffing ratios. And that's certainly something I provided to you guys. You'll see on the 911 stuff, on the data there, you can really get into the call volume and stuff like that to see, you know, your busy hours, your busy times, stuff like that, so we really keep track with some of the data reporting that we're able to get out of the computer software, both the 911 that we have and the EMD software, where we can really pull some good data out of that and know our really busy times and what our busy days are, whether it's, you know, Friday, Saturday, Sunday nights, or, you know, is it midweek? You know, is it the summer months are going to be busier than, you know, fall and winter? Really be able to track that sort of stuff.
Question, just as a point of clarification. So the four of the full-time positions includes yourself?
No. There's four full-time dispatchers and myself.
You're an additional.
He did hand out the org chart to me.
Okay. Does council have any other questions?
I just have one, a quick one.
Sure.
There's a, you have listed here for potential, potential savings of $20,700, roughly, right? I think it's your third bullet?
Yes.
By not filling one of the part-time positions, do you think it's not necessary to fill it, or?
Right now, from what we've, we've seen, call volume-wise, yeah, I think our staffing levels are out the more right now. You know, certainly potentially, we could, you know, look at that, as I said, if the call volume, you know, dramatically increases, or?
So it's the philosophy of, of he and I, along with the police and fire chiefs, that it's easier to staff minimally, see if it works, and if there's an issue, then staff up than it is to say, we shouldn't have hired all these people, and now you've got to let somebody go. So it's, it's being very carefully plotted all the way through, and so far, it's been working. There's been no issues with.
And certainly being a new department to the town, you know, we're watching that closely. That's, you know, something that we'll keep an eye on. Obviously, you know, our personnel are going to have vaca, you're still always going to have to cover for vacation time.
Sick time.
That's sick time, that sort of stuff, so we will have to take that into account.
I notice you have an upcoming, in your description, the future of the department, kind of a renovation of the space you're in, and you're adding a new console, furniture and chairs. Could you just add one chair for the council?
I already have a note for tomorrow.
Be one with a good leg on it.
One good leg.
Just one good leg?
That's better than the one we got.
That's right. Any other questions?
So the renovations, just so you under, the renovations that, as you look it over, is merely painting and replacing the carpeting and moving the furniture to different, different spot? No major construction?
It's nice to see that profile of the calls.
Interesting.
Interesting data to look at. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Also in public safety, next is our police department. Chief is here.
And that's budget 210? If you printed the updated, that has the page numbers, it's page number six.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have one for yourself?
I don't, but I think I got it memorized. I think I got it pretty well memorized. What you have, I just passed on in front of you, is a draft for a new position in the department this year, looking for a captain's position. The last page indicates the department's structure. And then you already have my project.
Just one, at first blush, without going through this, last year, though we were not able to fund it, you, my recollection is you asked for lieutenant to help dress out the hire.
Correct. So this year, I call it something different.
Okay.
Pretty much the next level between a sergeant and a chief would be lieutenant or a captain.
Okay.
Certainly down the road of room to, if this is a captain this year or next year or whenever, then a lieutenant still has room in there, and vice versa. But with only one structure moving forward, one more level of command, I went to the top naming of it.
Kathy, have a question?
Sure.
So chief, you're, you've currently got 16 plus three in the academy?
Correct.
So the academy cycles take a while, so going into FY 20, you won't be fully staffed the whole year, correct?
FY 20, we'll be losing one officer in December for retirement.
Okay.
And.
So that'll essentially give you 18 for most of the year?
Well, we have, with the recruits coming out before July 1st in the academy, yeah, we're going to have 19, and we're funded for 20.
Right.
Okay.
So within the retirement in December.
We'll be behind one.
You'll be back. So, and then you're going to try to staff for the next academy cycle, so even then.
It's a constant.
Yeah. No, that's what I was saying, so even then, he won't have, he won't be fully staffed for the whole year, but he's budgeted for 20.
Right.
Will that offset some of the costs of the captain?
I suppose, yeah.
Because there's no, there's no way he can get two more, well, he's not, he doesn't have two positions. One person's retiring mid-year, and then he's got to get somebody into the next academy cycle.
The next academy cycle is June 10th of this year, and it's already full, so we'd be looking at something in the fall.
And how long is the academy? Four months?
Well, it's 18 weeks now. I just cut it down to 18 weeks, but it's, it was 23, so it goes about four to five months, somewhere in there. This is a new program for the state fires, adjusting their timeline.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but if we know that somebody's retiring, we might hire prior to their leaving, so that we're not down.
That's, that was the goal of giving you a year's notice, that we could get in line with civil service.
They get a bonus for giving a year's notice.
Civil service takes time, so their testing only comes out once a year. The academies are certain times of the year that every municipality is up against, so the notice they're giving us, we can start scheduling, so that in that, you don't have it in front of you, but outside of this, the 20 people that we have budgeted for, there is one new position, which would be the captain. So going into July 1st, I anticipate we would be shy, still one guy, and then if you were to do the captain, you'd be, well, not till January, we're looking for budgeting for that, but from July, we would have money built into the budget for a new recruit, which I would anticipate going into the fall class and spending that money. So there may be some time between July 1st and the next recruit class if we were to replace the retiring officer. There'd be a time where that money technically is not spent in salaries available.
Obviously, you can only predict this, but do you have a sense that anyone on your staff now has aspirations to be a captain?
Yeah, so depending on all the nuts and bolts of how it works out with Denise and I and whoever, the union, there is some aspiration, I'm sure, to be there for one of the, one or all of the upper ranks. But I think how it's formatted will bear a lot, and who throws their hat in the ring. So we're looking at situations where it may not be union, and it may be management, and some of those guys look at that avenue as not being.
Attractive.
Attractive, because they have a lot, well, in their minds, they have a lot to learn. They've come in from a union position, and now it's no longer going to be there, so they, they look at that and say, do I want to tread on that water and cross it or not? So, but I would anticipate, they would probably throw their hats in the ring and keep the option open, some of them anyways.
Right. Also, it's listed as a position that would not be under civil service guidelines.
Correct.
So that makes it a little bit more difficult as well, I would imagine.
For in-house, it would be, yes.
Difficult for, yeah, for a promotion within. That's not the reason to do that. If it's going to be a management position, it should be non-union, non-civil service. If I remember correctly, chief, isn't the funding for a half-year?
Yeah. Did I say that?
You did.
Oh, okay, you did.
Yeah, no, and, and he's not going to be fully, my only point was, he's not going to be, there's no way mathematically he can be fully staffed for the whole year, given his position and one open and the next class being full. If he gets that person into the fall.
Yeah.
It's 18 weeks plus, so he, he should have a tiny bit.
Yeah, some.
Plus, he's looking for a half-year, you know, salary, but we have to look at it as FY 21, it's a year salary plus benefits. So just a quick question. So if it is management, then, and non-union, is that a contractual position? Like, you're going to offer the person a multi-year contract? Is that standard?
Yes.
The last page or the second page on my draft there, kind of did some poking with neighboring communities there, and kind of did the layout of what they have. Long Island and Wolverhampton are listed there, because they're equal-sized communities with, with an upper layer of management that we don't have. So looking at what they offer, that's, that's their command staff living, well, level plus their patrolman level, plus how they work it over in those particular communities.
Both towns are not civil service.
I mean, the goal is, I guess, I laid out in front there, would be part of what the goal would be, talking to the town manager would be a union, a non-union major position. We still are, you know, doing the right thing and approaching the union and see what, if any, pushbacks legally they have. Everybody can always have pushback.
Well, that would be philosophical, right.
So we're not at that ground yet.
Right.
But we, you know, so we anticipate, hopefully, any hurdles that we overcome, we can do within the next six months.
So chief, so this position would have to come from within the ranks of a academy-trained professional, or someone who's gone through the academy elsewhere? Because it says with police powers?
Yes, that person, in my opinion, would definitely have police powers. It wouldn't be an administrative position where they have no police powers.
Right.
That's not what I'm looking for here.
So they have to go through the academy?
They have to be certified by the MPTC, Massachusetts.
They would have been already.
Or one or the other, yeah.
Or an outside candidate from another municipality's department who has police training and has.
Has a certification from the MPTC, which is Massachusetts standards, or they can, they are allowed to get waivers that would, if they did not.
Is there reciprocity with other states?
It's the waiver part.
It's the waiver, okay.
You bring forth your goods, and the state will either bless them or not.
I bet you.
And say, we think this is equal to what we would offer if you went through the academy, and we would consider your credentialed valid, meeting the standards that we have in Massachusetts. But it's, yeah.
Other questions?
Questions on the general budget?
That's item two, right?
Yes.
So this, this would be on top of the actual proposed budget?
No. It's included.
You can include it in there, even though it's a new position?
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for the chief?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we are two minutes away from 6:30, so I can either talk slowly for two minutes, or we can recess for two.
Not that easy.
How fast can you speak?
Thank you.
Let's, I'll entertain a motion to recess for three minutes. That'll give you time to.
Second.
All right. Those in favor of a recess, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Time for a breather. All right, we are in session. And so our next item on the agenda is, we have to go back, take a motion.
Who's all included?
Oh, that's right. All-inclusive.
Very well thought-out motion.
So we are at item 8A, public hearing, a proposed bylaw for Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This is a first reading, and let me review for everyone's benefit the public hearing protocol. The reason for this public hearing is to read for the first time a new proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw. Let me introduce the council to you from my right to your left, councilors Floyd, Landen, Anderson, Hill, Kane, and O'Connor, and visitor Menard. This is a public hearing, and the procedure is as follows. After I open the meeting, the clerk will read the legal notice into the record. The applicant, in this case, it's the town council slash GPW, will read for the first time the new proposed bylaw regarding the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. The meeting is being recorded, and I will ask if there's anyone in the audience who is planning to speak, to identify themselves clearly, and state their home address for the record. After the applicant has finished their presentation, I will open the hearing for public hearing. All parties speaking must address the council. I'm sorry, I merged that. All parties speaking need to address the president and not each other. After the public has addressed the council, I will then close the public portion of the hearing. At that time, the council will discuss among themselves the matters pertinent to the proposed Enterprise Fund bylaw, and then the council will take a vote to continue the proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw for a second reading. That being said, I will now open the public hearing, and Mr. Florence, can you please read the legal notice into the record?
Yep. The Islam Middle Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, at 6:30 PM in the meeting room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a new proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw. Information relating to this proposed bylaw is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Finney, I assume, and Mr. Christensen from the DPW. Do you want, do you have the proposed language for the bylaw?
Yes.
To read to the council? All right, I'll read it on your behalf.
It's usually the council that reads it.
But you can certainly come to the table, because at some point, there's going to be questions. The Stormwater Management Program is a state mandate. The Stormwater Management Program is a state mandate designed to promote the health and safety of the public, to protect property from flooding and the damage caused by stormwater runoff, and to protect and manage water quality by controlling the level of pollutants in stormwater runoff and the flow of water as conveyed by man-made and by natural stormwater management systems and facilities. This is hereby established within the Department of Public Works, a utility known as the Stormwater Division, under the day-to-day supervision of the Superintendent of Public Works. The Department of Public Works shall administer the stormwater management programs of the town through the Stormwater Division. It shall be funded by revenue collected through the stormwater fee and such other funds as may, from time to time, be appropriated or obtained through other sources, included but not limited to grants and low-interest loans. A full description of the Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw, including scope of responsibility, stormwater management credit policy, and stormwater enterprise funding, is available and on file at the town clerk's office, Town Hall, 60 Sunny Square, East Long Meadow. It was a dark and stormy night.
Exactly.
I shouldn't be facetious.
I thought you were doing the whole thing.
Would you like to elaborate on the, the history, or the need, or whatever you feel is pertinent?
Sure. I've said this before, I've come before you this evening to discuss the draft Stormwater Enterprise Fund bylaw. This is the department's first public hearing to discuss the language within the document and public comment. The new stormwater utility will provide a funding source for the town of East Long Meadow to comply with the new MS4 mandated by the EPA and the DEP, which began on July of 2018. There are 12 surrounding communities that are, have already adopted a new funding source, which includes a Stormwater Enterprise Fund. This also was approved and recommended by the bylaw subcommittee and also the Board of Public Works.
Okay. That said, do we have anyone from the audience who wishes to come forward and, and comment or make a statement? The public is silent this evening? At this point, then, since there is no public comment, I will close the public portion of the public hearing. And at this point, the council can ask questions or have discussion.
Question through the chair. And on average, we're talking about $25 a home?
Yes. On average, for a residential home, is $25 per year, which equates to about $2.08 a month. And I'm kind of just, kind of grouping the LUC, land use codes, kind of just for discussion purposes. Commercial properties are $100 per year, which equates to $8.33 per month. Mixed-use commercial residential properties, $200 a month. Large commercial and industrial properties, $500 per year.
And that other one was 200, a year, you meant?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Can I say a month? I'm sorry.
We don't like those people.
So should this be approved, and the fee schedules you just made reference to, how is that going to be billed to the consumer? Am I going to see that and add it to a water bill?
Water and sewer bill.
Okay.
Yes.
And it'll be, you know, separated out?
Yes, it'll say stormwater fee, yes. And that'll be billed out probably July 1st, and we'll work it out with the council.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have a question. I was, the, the fee has nothing to do with evaluation of the home, or the size of the property, I imagine, right? It's basically just to amortize the fee throughout the residents of the community to watch, to watch the fee out, so.
Yes. Actually, and I kind of prepared for this question, so I took the total number of parcels, well, I had to come up with an operational budget, first and foremost. Then I had to take the total number of parcels within the town of East Long Meadow. I took that information, averaged the amount of impermeable surfaces area for each land use code, and then obviously divided that and came up with the dollar figures that are in the table, which will be part of our rates and fees every year.
I mean, it's common sense that this water that we're talking about is created by either snow or rain.
Exactly. And/or, like you said, in some cases, illegal connections.
Right.
So, and obviously, this is the way to, to look at the, the system. We're going to be testing the water in the system and chasing, obviously, any contaminants within the system and finding the source.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I'm quoting it correctly, what I talked about in terms of valuation or square footage, because obviously residents are, you know, wondering how the, how this fee's been created.
Right.
And it's, it's about, you know, water that the environment's creating, 90% of it. It's not, has nothing to do with valuation or size of a property. The distinction is between residential and commercial, basically, on the fee structure.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Just a question through the chair. The table that we discussed in the past, that is going to be separate from the bylaw, but included as an addendum or something?
I've actually put it, I'm putting that fee schedule as part of our rates and fees, so that fee schedule will be reflected in the rates and fees every year.
Right.
Because, like you said, we discussed in the bylaw-
If you merge it into the bylaw, you have to keep changing the bylaw.
Exactly. So that was a suggestion, yes, from the bylaw subcommittee.
If there are no other questions, then I will entertain a motion to continue this proposed new bylaw to a second reading, probably at our-
April 23rd.
April 23rd.
April 23rd, at 6:30 PM.
Do you want me to read the motion?
Certainly.
Continue the public hearing for a second reading to address the proposed Stormwater Enterprise Fund to April 23rd, 2019, at 6:30 PM.
Motion's been made and seconded to continue this hearing for a second reading on April 23rd at 6:30 PM. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. This motion carries. Bylaw will continue on our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Also, for public hearing, and good timing, is our next public hearing, this is a proposed zoning map change to, for 51 Prospect Street from Residence C to Business Zoning District, and this is the first reading. Again, the members of the council from the left are councilors Ford, Manley, Anderson, Gill, Kane, and O'Connor. Again, I will open the public meeting. The clerk will read the notice into the record. The applicant, in this case, it's the town council, will read the first-time language for the proposed zoning map change. Anyone who wishes to speak will, will ask to come forward and identify yourself and home address. I'll open the hearing for public input. Parties need to address the president and not each other. After the public has addressed the council, I'll close the public portion, and the council will have an opportunity to discuss among themselves any questions, and then the council will take a vote to approve the zone change from Residence C to Business Zoning District, or to take the matter under advisement. That said, this public meeting is open, or the hearing is open, Mr. Florence.
The East Long Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, April 9th, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the meeting room at the Council on Aging located at 328 North Main Street to address a zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 27-154A-A, 51 Prospect Street, from Residence C to Business Zoning District. Information relating to this amendment is on file with the town clerk and available for review by the public. For the council, Thomas Florence, clerk of the council.
And just to give you some background, back in November, the owners of this property approached the council, asking that the zoning map change from residence to business, Residence C to Business District. We, the council referred it to planning, they acted on it and recommended the council support it, so we are back here now to approve an update to the zoning map at the assessor's parcel, 27-154A-A. Okay, that said, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to speak on this matter? Mr. Page, please come forward.
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. All I'm asking for is clarification. I'm reading the minutes of the town council's meeting on January 8th, where a zone change from Residence C to Business was approved by vote of the council. So is this just a map change that you're looking for, because the town council's already voted for the district to be changed?
I do believe that you're correct in that distinction.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I believe that situation was corrected. The terminology was, we were putting the horse before the cart, and everything was corrected, so the motion-
So this is really just to now adjust the map as well?
Kathy, I think it would be helpful if you'd give a little more history on why, because this was essentially a mislabeled property, correct?
I think the history is simply that, is that it's been labeled-
It's been a residence, but it's been a business for-
Correct. It's been a business for years, but it was somehow, previous to this administration, mislabeled back in the day, and regardless, not pointing blame certainly at any individual or entity, and the owners, through their attorney, have requested that it be properly labeled to reflect the fact that they're using the property as a business, as well as the zoning map to reflect that change as well.
Just want to read that one paragraph of the-
Yes. So I, I did that, to approve the zoning map.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions from the council?
Just a quick sidebar. Basically, as long as I've lived in this town since 87, that place has been a business. In fact, it's not a standalone, it abuts other businesses. So it's not like we have a business, hey, there's a, you know, there's a residential, not a business. It's this float, it's always been used for professional offices, what else I can remember? I think even Larry Levine's office was there at one time. Fred Stevens Real Estate was there. Hairdressing place was there. It's always been, as long as people can remember, it just, the petitioner, Attorney Sosia, realized that it was not zoned as a business, yet the use is for multi-decades, has been a business, caps and all, and part of a larger business area.
Any other comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, I'll entertain, Mr. Kane, have that?
You're going to close the public hearing?
Yes. Hearing is closed. We've had a lot of-
There's a public comment section.
Public comment section, yes. Public comment section is closed. Even when you have a script in front of you, it's difficult to fall away from it. We have a lot of moves tonight, a lot of moving pieces. Mr. Kane, can you read the motion, please?
Sure. I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for a second reading to address a proposed zoning map amendment to rezone parcel 27-154 Alpha/Alpha, otherwise identified as 51 Prospect Street from Residence C to Business Zoning District, to April 23rd, 2019, at 6:40 PM.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. That motion passes, and we will move to a second hearing. I understand. And we are back to our budget session, in the all-inclusive, one-size-fits-all agenda adjustment, and back to Public Safety Fire Department, Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening. Does the, does the police chief know you use color-coded?
You do?
Color, color handouts.
I'm trying to show you up, Jeff.
So was the chief.
I was trying to save money.
Oh, you've got a color printer, too?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. We're all ears.
So welcome. From your original packet, I am, the fire department budget is on page seven, line, line number 220, and we're also talking in the same context of the capital items, which is on page 18, and the receipts reserved for appropriation on page 28, the ambulance fund. Basically, I'm not sure we've had the opportunity, first of all, to talk about how the department's running in the past year, which plays a big part in how the department's going forward. We did start our basic life support ambulance, which everybody knows, it's been extremely busy. It's actually taken on a pretty good life of its own right now, especially when we transitioned to the 24-hour coverage of the, with the ambulance. Working with some providers around us, we are actually setting records compared to our neighbors, as far as how many runs we're doing, how many transports we're doing, and overall, how busy the fire department is. For July, from July 1st till now, the collected revenue is $177,000 and change, so minus expenses, we're currently sitting at about $153,000 in gross, in net revenue, that we're going to be using moving forward for the FY '20 budget. Little bit shy of what I need, but we still have more time. I anticipate by the end of the year, we'll be at that $200,000, which was where I predicted. Interesting to note, we still have outstanding about $136,000 of revenue. That, you know, comes in, it's usually about, you know, $7,000 to $9,000 a week. It's the Medicare and Medicaid insurance game, it's, it's been a, it's been an interesting process.
Experience.
It's been an interesting process, right? The real exciting part is, now that we're doing it 24 hours a day, and working with Scott and dispatch and Jeff and the police department, our, we know every run that happens now in town, except for there's a few, they call them poachers, they, the nursing homes call direct for an emergency call from AMR, one of our partners, and some of the other companies out there. So those are the emergency calls that we never know about. We do find out about them accidentally, when they can't respond on a timely fashion, and they call us up and say, hey, we're 40 minutes out, can you guys take this call? We get them. But there are quite a few that we are, we're learning, we're learning it now. So from January 1st till now, we've transported a total of 244 transports. We provided 244 transports, which, you know, in my eyes, I think it's, it's working extremely well. That's with one ambulance. So tack on another 292 from American Medical Response, AMR. Long Meadow Fire Department's mutually aided into town several times. Wilbraham's been here a little bit, National Ambulance Service has been here, and we've actually, actually used Agawam Fire Department to come in and provide ALS intercept for us. It's just, it's a busy community, with three nursing homes, one more getting installed, several assisted living facility and independent living facilities, and then you tack on the elderly housing complexes we have. They're, they're very busy. So overall, the departments had 892 responses. 77 of them are, 77% of them, or 690 of them, are EMS-related. 23% are fire-related, which, in the scheme of things, is pretty similar to what some other departments are. Some are 67%. And one of the communities that I looked at was 80, 80/20, East Hampton, similar-sized community as us, population-wise, department structure. The org chart you see on page two is that, that's our current operation, that would be our operation going forward, July 1st. Starts with the fire chief. I have four career captains. The org chart you see on page two is that's our current operation. That would be our operation going forward, July 1st. Starts with the fire chief. I have four career captains, 16 career firefighters, funded for 16 career firefighters. I need, I have two going in the academy. They start officially on Thursday, but they've been employed working the ambulances for us. And they'll start the academy, they'll come out just before July 1st. And we have another employee that begins employment July 1st. He will round out our tier of 20 employees, 20 career employees. Currently, we have 10 call firefighters, pretty active bunch. They don't come back for the medical callback, sometimes they do, but for the most part, if we need them for a big, major call, they're, and they're available, they come, which is great. They're still trained, they're still training on a regular basis with the new, with our new setup. Going forward, I just mentioned we have that new firefighter that begins. One of my, one of my, I guess my wish list for this year is my budget, if you can see on that page, on page seven, it does go up 26%. Most of that is, was reflected in the overall growth of the department. A small portion of that is, is a request for a new deputy chief's position. This task, the amount of responsibility and the work involved, there needs to be one more person at that management level. Right now, I have four great captains, they're all doing the job. But when it comes to some of the stuff that needs to come down to administrative level, it needs to be a non-union position. It's hard to have two bosses, so you have a captain who answers to me, but he also, he's also a union member. So, it's difficult when you get to some situations. So, that middle-level management, administration needs to be in the, in the structure. I did provide, another page down, I'll show you some of the comparisons with our communities around us. But we plan on submitting our ALS license application in August, hopefully getting that expected for November and begin that operation, which will also increase some of our revenues. If approved, the deputy chief would begin employment September 29th. That's what is budgeted for, and it would fit in with the ranks. Attached with your package is a job description, draft job description, but it kind of outlines his roles and responsibilities. One of the hardest parts now with our shift rotation and going forward, it still works out, is the inspection process. If that, if my inspector, who is a union position, is on shift, he's only on shift every couple of days. So, sometimes, somebody has to actually step up and fill in for him, or who's ever looking for that inspection, if they can hold off and wait a few days. But if you're the realtor trying to sell a house and you need that inspection prior to the closing, we try to get it done. So, there's a whole bunch of moving parts. Going forward though, in that next year, if we look at where we are now call-wise, we're going to be close to 3,300 incidents for the year. When I first got on the fire department, we were doing 500 runs a year. So, it's an extreme amount of growth. And if we keep that same breakdown, about 2,500 and change is going to be EMS-related and 23% is going to be that still fire-related. Based on current revenues that we're receiving, we're predicting the department should see close to $600,000 in revenue next year from the ambulances, which, if you flip the page, there's always an ask. The fire department, at that point, we are a two-ambulance community. I believe with the funds in that ambulance account, the money should be used to purchase second ambulances, hire four new firefighters to round out each shift to six. That fund's going to help cover the ambulance overtime, licenses, software, any ambulance maintenance, and EMS equipment supplies. Looking at similar department comparisons, we are, going back to 2018, we weren't a 24-hour EMS department, so we didn't see anything between 6 o'clock at night, 6 o'clock in the morning. So, our numbers were low compared to our neighboring communities. And again, East Hampton's listed there too, because very similar in department size and operations. Predicting going forward, currently to date, we're at 892 incident responses, where the next closest one is Wilbraham with 840, then 817 for Long Meadow, and 762. Looking at this when we started, we could never get real numbers from AMR as far as how many they were doing. Now we see it, now we know. With our prediction, I mentioned, we're going to be at that 3,300 mark for runs. And the graph kind of shows where we are compared to our neighboring communities. And it also shows on the table who has, you know, career deputy chiefs, their departments that operate similar to how we are, but we don't have that deputy. They have deputies, some of them even have an extra position in there for that fire inspector. I don't think we need that yet, we're not at that point. Not saying three or four years from now. It should have been in the original plan, the deputy chief. I apologize, it wasn't. I didn't want to overshoot at the time, thought we could manage, but it's something that we could really help, to help the responsibility, you know, get the job done. And the last part is the job description.
Thank you. Any questions?
If I had, yeah, if I didn't answer the questions with all of that.
The assistance you need from outside agencies such as AMR or other towns, is that because our ambulance is running and, you know, already on a call? And/or there are ALS calls that we can't take at this point?
Initially, we were going, the ambulance was going everything and we were trying to get intercepts. That's because, just because of our EMD portion. Now that the EMD is up and running as February 1st, we know, for the most part, if it's going to be a BLS call or an ALS call. So, we can automatically dispatch AMR. But there's still times that AMR is not available, which we're seeing more and more now. Certain times of the day, it's like they're not around. Or there's, we do get hit a lot of times with multiple calls. So, AMR is primarily our ALS provider at this point. They have had some management changes. And we do have, Denise and I have a meeting with them later this week to ensure that our relationship going forward. They know we're going ALS, they know we're going to be able to do it. Again, it's, and we anticipate we need them for at least another year until, we are a two, two-and-a-half ambulance town. There's just no, I mean, if you look, and we're growing, the town's growing, our population's aging. Another 130-something beds at the corner of Maple Street and Dwight, that's ours, that's East Long Meadows.
But it's fair to say that, I mean, you're calling these other ambulances because our ambulance is out working.
Oh, absolutely.
So, I mean, that's a good thing.
If it's not an ALS, if it comes in initially as an ALS call, and AMR is available, our ambulance isn't going.
So, my next question would be, how much longer before we can handle ALS calls?
If everything goes right, we're looking for predicting November, which, you know, I've been in contact with the state, told them our process. I can't submit the application until we actually have the equipment on the truck. And we have the staffing, we have the qualified staffing, which is one of their concerns. We're telling them our, the training level and the experience level of the, some of the paramedics we've hired, and we're good, we're really good with that. Again, we need some of that equipment that's in the budget for next year. So, place the order, July 1st, stuff comes in, end of July, early August, application mailed shortly following. And typically, it's a couple of months' process. And then we will be running ALS. We can't, we can't say goodbye to the mutual aid companies, never.
I don't think you ever can.
No, you know, it's a public safety, there's no way you can budget for everything. But when I started this process, you know, the neighboring communities were $500,000 to $600,000 in income. Long Meadows, right now, is getting ready to hit that $800,000 mark for the year, and the year's not over yet. So, and we're going to do more runs than that.
So, our calls that are, become non-transport calls must be non-revenue runs for the town, right?
There are, there are non-revenue runs for the town, correct.
I mean, and again, you can't, you never know till you get there.
Right. A lot of times we'll get there and it turns into a, it's called a patient refusal. There is signatures required in the software that they have to sign off on it in that way. And there are those that, you know, the EMTs or the paramedics really try and stress to the patient, you know, we're concerned, you are, this is our level of concern. Patient, you can't, you can't force somebody to go.
Well, we know, I mean, two ambulances, it's almost like people. I mean, there's going to be times when you're going to have to put that ambulance down for service.
Right.
All you need is two calls in two different sections of town. Car accident here, medical transport over here.
Right.
Again, now you don't have to call an outside agency.
Right.
So, you're going to get redundancy. We already know we have the need for the calls.
Right, we're seeing, we're seeing the true numbers.
I think we, when we think back to, you know, why we decided to fund this project to begin with, you know, it was about customer service for our community. But we also had an inkling that, I mean, there's a reason why, you know, that ambulance company gave us a zero-dollar contract. They weren't doing it out of the goodness of their heart, they're a private company.
Right.
So, so we knew that, and it sounds like, you know, if anything, we're probably a little ahead of where I thought we'd be at this point, you know, and on target. And, you know, it's a revenue-producing item, but it's better customer service that we control. And that's why I originally, you know, decided that it was worth the money. And it sounds like it's paying off, so.
If you put the people part of it into the equation, the staff, they, nothing but compliments from the residents and the people that they interact with. I'm kind of proud just of my group. I have 19 people that really enjoy coming to work every day.
Well, the response time is, the response time is obviously going to be better because we never know where AMR is going to be staged, or where they're going to be called. So, that can vary, but if those ambulances are based at the station, or they're somewhere in town, 90% of the time, they're not out of town.
Even if they, even, just with that though, we know, Dispatch knows, if that, even if that ambulance is out of town. So, now it's, there's no, okay, let's wait 15 minutes to find out where that ambulance is. Dispatch knows, okay, rescue one's out of town. And they are, actually, they've been really good about forcing out of AMR, are you in town and are you coming with an ALS unit? If they get the slightest hint that we're going to be 15 minutes, we're coming from Bay State, okay, never mind, we'll call Long Meadow, or we'll call Wilbraham. And, which is, that's key. For resident safety and, you know, getting the right help to that person. We still, we don't, we backed off a little bit. I know there was a lot of concern initially about the fire trucks going to calls. We don't send the fire trucks to most of the calls. If it's an ALS call, our ambulance isn't going unless there isn't one going. So, we'll send that there, especially if it's AMR, because that way, we don't know what timeframe is. So, we'll send our fire truck there. And if they get there and AMR's not there, they could start, you know, with some EMT-level service, at least give the patients some care. So, it's.
Have you drawn a correlation between BLS and ALS calls at all?
Percentage?
Are you tracking that at all?
It's hard for us to track because we don't, we don't know when AMR actually takes that call, if it gets billed out as an ALS. I can tell you, based on our numbers, 55 so far have been, 55 or 56 of them so far this year have been ALS for us, because we had intercepts. But if you look at some of our neighboring communities, it's about 67% of their runs are ALS and the rest of them are BLS. So, potentially going forward, they're all going to be, more of them are going to be higher, higher level of care.
Yeah, so November will be an interesting month for us.
It will be, yeah. It's all been interesting.
Question, Long Meadow, Wilbraham, East Hampton. So, currently, we're trying to get ALS in November.
Correct.
Are they currently ALS?
They're all ALS.
And how many ambulances do each community currently have?
Wilbraham has three.
Three.
East Hampton, three. They don't staff three, they staff two. Long Meadow has three, which I thought one of them was coming our way for, as a, I can use it if I need, if mine goes out for, I'll change. But currently, they're running three ambulances. The third one's not primary, but it's there if they need it, strictly with callback help though.
And each of these ambulances, they have the capacity, ALS?
ALS, yeah. So, they all have the cardiac monitors, they all have drug bags, yeah.
Question for the chair. With regards to the, your second part of that request, the Assessors Parcel Department will submit an FY '20-21 budget request to use the FY '20-20 projected revenue for $598,500 to fund. Do we know what that's going to actually cost? Or we're just guessing that this is going to?
That was, it wasn't a complete swag, but it was, if you figure, depending on when the employee starts, $50,000 a year, that's $200,000. An ambulance is about, it's going to be more because I will build, when we lease that ambulance, we'll build in the cardiac monitor into that. So, and the price has gone up a little bit every year. So, that's going to be about 120. And a piece of that, from my overtime budget now, I can, by then, I'll have a real good handle on what the percentage for EMS callback is and what the percentage for fire callback is. So, I'm going to use that money there. My ambulance supplies, we've budgeted this year for it. But again, we'll have a better handle on it next year. So, that 598, if that, that's the whole revenue, and like this year, we're predicting $200,000 revenue, we're not using it all. So, that stays in that fund for that. But I can't budget for it unless we have it, like this year. I can't budget more than that $200,000, which I'm not, but. Which brings me to the other point on my budget for this year. If you look at line, the last section of my, for page 28, in that ambulance fund budget, there should have been, from section page 18, the life pack monitor, that 47 should have been added to that number, that 121. It's not built into that. There's some confusion on both my parts and I think Sarah's part when that moved over. Because it's not getting funded under capital, but it is getting funded under that ambulance. I believe Sarah's going to have that reflected in the final package that you guys will see. But it's still coming from, so it's not coming out of taxation, it's coming out of the revenue, but that'll still leave us money left over.
It's going to come out of the capital part of the request, that 24,000?
It comes out of, I think it's an equipment capital line.
Yes, it comes out of the capital, but for the ambulance fund, it's not out of tax dollars. So, it's not out of that big capital number that we've been discussing.
Right.
So, Chief, on page five, you have number of staff positions, the second to the last block.
Yep. So, a staff, a staff in the fire department is anybody that doesn't ride the line as a regular part of their job, as like a line firefighter. So, everybody that's a captain on down, currently on my department, is a line firefighter. They get on that fire truck, they go into the burning buildings. A staff position is more like the admin positions.
So, like Carrie?
No, that wouldn't be Carrie. This person is still a firefighter, so if there was, if there's a fire, that person can go into the building, burning building, or can stand out front and actually run the fire, be in charge of the fire. So, Long Meadow, they have, theirs is built in, it's a deputy chief. And then they also have the person who's the fire inspector and EMS coordinator. Wilbraham just has the, has a deputy chief and a fire inspector standing with East Hampton.
I understand, thank you.
Our fire, like our fire inspector's on shift, so he's really not a staff person. He is, he's a line firefighter.
Thank you.
So, this may be a question for Sarah, but I'll ask it to you and see where it comes from. 26% increase to the budget.
Yep.
Is there any way to offset that with this projected $200,000 from the ambulance fund?
I think, I'd be honest with you, judging how the requirement of, you need to have that money in before you budget it, yes. The short answer is yes. How much? If we do get that $200,000 mark, there's probably going to be about $20,000-something left. So, yeah, we can offset it $20,000. If we're lucky enough to realize the whole $100-something thousand currently we have outstanding, we could offset it by $100,000.
It's just a large increase in the budget, 26%.
It was, at least it's not like last year, last year was 53, it'd be 54%. But it's.
You're heading in the right direction, Paul.
What's that?
You're heading in the right direction.
I am heading in the right direction. And hopefully, next year, I'll come back and it'll be the 2% like everybody, aspires to be.
Or even a slight reduction. As the ambulance fund had more funds, we'd be able to charge more to there. So, in future years, there could be an actual reduction to put all of the ambulance-related expenses against the ambulance fund.
Right. And ultimately, if the council's in favor, and the town manager and director of finance agree with it. of finance are agree with it, at that last, very last day, if there's, if there's that two hundred thousand dollars in there, and we come back in and say, listen, we're gonna raise the ambulance revenue, and part of their overtime, because, which is, it's easy to do, part of that overtime is gonna come out of that now, so it's gonna drop some of that number down. I can't guarantee, I can't guarantee that until that hap, until that money's in the bank, though.
To the chair, I just wanted to clarify one issue. There, there is a difference in BLS runs and ALS runs, correct?
Correct.
Charge-wise?
Oh, absolutely.
And what, what, do you have any, just a general idea?
Yes, a BLS run for us is eleven hundred dollars and change. An ALS, there's two different levels ALS runs. An ALS one is about eighteen hundred and change, and an ALS two is about twenty-eight hundred and change. And, as far as for our residents, it was, I had, when I say misfortune, I was at a seminar for a local health provider, and they're, they're pushing the private ambulance services because they're cheaper. And I've had, my neighbor was transported by AMR, and he came over, and he was, his wife, what, what is this bill? And it was an ALS two bill, it was a pretty serious incident, ALS two bill. And, and they're, they're, everybody's telling us, you know, AMR's cheaper, AMR's cheaper. AMR does a tiered system, we're a flat rate. If it's eleven hundred dollars and change, it's eleven hundred dollars and change. If it's eighteen hundred, that's the number. You pay the mileage, but that, they do, so if they put the cardiac monitor on you, it's four hundred and fifty bucks. If they put the nasal cannula to your nose, it's two hundred and fifty dollars. So you're getting that ALS two level for thirty-six hundred dollars.
Wow.
It might be twenty-two hundred dollars for the baseline, but then they start adding stuff to it. And these numbers are just rough numbers right now, but that, that's how it works. Yeah, ALS two is cheaper baseline, but once you start using equipment, it totals up. So, it is, that's, that's the insurance price. Once you get Medicare and Medicaid involved, it comes way down.
Well, it gives us a, a way to project, I mean, if, if, you have a percentage on how many ALS calls come in, and we have an idea on, on when that could happen.
Right.
Let's just say November. So the revenue stream, you know, it sounds like it's, it's one-third, two-thirds, or?
Right, that number, the number five thousand, five hundred and nine.
Sixty percent more for a two, an ALS two, and that's?
The number that five hundred and ninety-eight thousand, number, I'm, I'm over-conservative, I guess, super-conservative, I, you know, I used a real low average per run, a couple hundred dollars less per run that we're actually seeing now, and, just because I try to be conservative.
And the last piece, because it has something to do with revenue, how far will you transport? Somebody said, I need to go to Boston.
We haven't got that call yet. We've gone to Wing, which was a poke. We've gone to Holyoke Hospital, which is a poke. And, and those are non-life-threatening calls. If it's a, if it's a trauma call or a life-threatening call, patients really can't dictate where they're gonna wanna go, it's either Bay State or Mercy. We gotta go to a trauma center, and that's, that's dictated. The EMTs know the protocol on that. You don't drive by a perfectly good hospital with somebody that's, has a life-threatening illness or injury.
So the demographics are pretty much figured out this?
Yeah, 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 so.
Question from, like, it's an accounting point-of-view question. When you send a bill, how long typically does it take? It depends on whether it's a private insurance company or the government?
We, we, setting up Medicaid or Medicare took several months, setting up Medicaid took seven months. But we're up and running. It does take, I think the typical bill, the insurance company looking at it, it's probably sixty to ninety days, somewhere a hundred and twenty.
Okay. And we, from an accounting point of view, it, we count it in the budget where it's received, not where it's billed.
Exactly.
Correct, because it's a receipt, receipts reserved for appropriation, so it has to physically be in our bank account.
Right, that's that number that, right now, it's at one fifty-seven.
And that's receivables.
Right.
And it's at the date of the vote of the budget.
Right. One of the pieces of legislations that President and Denise were, were part of, when I, at the FCAM conference, or the Western Mass Fire Chiefs Legislative Conference was, and I was the fortunate one to speak about it, but was, when it comes to insurance billing, you're, you're a patient, the insurance company says, you know what, I'm gonna melt Mr. Anderson, his, his ambulance transport check. So you get the check for eleven hundred dollars minus your deductible at your house two weeks before Christmas.
What are you gonna do?
Is the ambulance gonna get it?
Is the, is the ambulance company gonna get that check?
A lot of cases.
It's, it's happened to us, it's happened to us that we know of once, and that person has not responded to our billing agency, and with the director of finance, actually with Dawn, we've, that person is not going to collect, that bill is not going to collections. It's just, it's unfair.
Is it considered in the same level as a municipal lien? So if they're refinancing their house, does that come on there, or is that separate?
I don't know if you can do that.
That is completely different.
Yeah, I don't know if you can do that.
I saw in Springfield, that popped on an MLC.
Really?
Where, no, a police call came in, there was a three hundred dollar, I don't know whether it was cop aesthetic them doing it, but they stuck it on an MLC.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
Yeah, I just wonder.
Anything else for the chief, moving on here? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. And the door's always open, if anybody ever wants to stop by and see the operation, we're there.
All right, next on our list is Council on Aging. And Sarah, what number is that for us?
Um, that is five, four, one.
Page eight. Oh, yep. Denise here.
No, no, I don't know, but this page eight, page twenty?
Oh, well, she sent this email last week.
Oh, I'm still working off it.
Yeah, and I liked it, my mind was just.
Yeah, for now.
Brilliant, yeah. Thank you.
All right, Carolyn.
Thank you. So, because I have a captivated audience, I'm gonna give you a little bit of information about COA's been doing. This is our organizational chart that we're asking for.
Thank you.
Two last ones, I got two left. Only once, only twice, probably.
And?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And so as I give you out that organizational chart, I do have to talk about everybody on that chart. Some of you knew that I was out for the past six weeks with pneumonia and asthma, and when I tell you that group of people pulled this place together, it was amazing, and I just need to brag about them. I came back and thought, do you really need me? But my second-in-chief, Lisa Fontaine, said, I am so glad you're back. So I just really wanna recognize them. It's a fantastic group of people, working for all of you, so I just wanted to mention that.
And they didn't know what happened?
Oh, they didn't. I was sick for six weeks.
I knew you were sick.
So, I just wanna talk a little bit about what's been happening at the COA, and then we'll go into the budget. But last year, we served one thousand one hundred and seventy-five women and four hundred and fifty-six men. They are a challenge. One thing, there is more older women, but also it's harder for men to come into a setting like that, so that is one of our goals, is to do outreach, to have men come in here, because the socialization is really important for their health. Donell Tavella has been doing outreach for us, and is now holding meet-and-greets at Quarry Hill, Village Green in Brownstone, which has been received really well. So she goes there and she does as much community, you know, information referral, SNAP applications, and things like that. So we have been much more present in the community, we were able to buy some signage that we can use when we're going out to events and stuff, so people are coming up to us now, because we look more professional, with some banners, and, and getting some information, and then Donell's able to follow up. We've had a lot of support from police and fire, that we've been working with them with our dementia-friendly, which I'll speak a little, a little bit with you about. We also have a liaison from police and fire, and we're doing a lot of exciting things with them, so we're excited about that. Our real emphasis the past year has been working with veterans. I think most of you know that we worked with a lot of the veteran service officers in the area to do a veterans picnic in the park in October. It was extremely successful, so we are gonna be doing that again in Wilbraham, because we do wanna travel around so that all of the veterans are able to access services, so it was very successful. And we also have been working with the veterans here, we did our first brunch, was it our first brunch? I think so.
Yeah.
And it was really, really successful. Care One has been extremely supportive, and they put on, they provided all the food for that brunch, and Care One has also done a lot of sponsorships with our programs here. Probably the one, the most important thing is their staff is helping us with the dementia-friendly initiative to get us certified, so I, I just have to do a call-out to them, they're awesome. We have started, per request of a lot of the seniors, that they wanna be able to go out to dinner and not spend twenty-five dollars apiece, that they wanna be able to go out at night and have a good meal, so we have, all of, a lot of the local restaurants are providing meals for us, five dollars for each person, and we only ask five dollars for them. And we have, you know, every few months, we have a very popular, usually sold-out dinner here, that's been really helpful. And again, I mentioned before how important it is to get men out to the senior center, and that is one of the times, between that and our Tuesday breakfast, that we're getting them to come out. So, that's been really popular, the Tuesday breakfast has been awesome, that's grown significantly, so they're coming here on Tuesday mornings and just sitting around having like pancakes and?
What else do we have?
Sausage.
Sausage, yeah, and all of that, so that's been great. We also, a very successful partnership was with Crow River Farm, where we're doing the farm share program, so with your food stamps, you can purchase fresh produce locally. So that was, been very successful, successful, we did that for the first time this summer. I do wanna tell you, one of the really successful things, that the benefit of having a millennial work for you, is that they know how to do social media, and we have had an incredible participation and engagement with the community, with our social media. I only have five of these, and I'm pretty sure about two of you are gonna read all this, but I'm gonna have this available for you, it is our social media reports and data. We're focusing on Facebook right now, and probably our most successful social media has been Google Business, I don't know if you're all familiar with that, but if you Google something, it'll come up on your, on the side about all of the information. It is amazing how much feedback and how much traffic has, that we're seeing for the Pleasant Few Senior Center. And this is just for the month of March, we had one thousand nine hundred and fourteen people searching and coming up to Pleasant Few Senior Center and the Council on Aging. And one thousand fifteen number of times, a customer found this listing by searching for the business name or the address on Google search or Maps. By category, the number of people searching for a product or service, eight hundred and ninety-nine, and the total views just during the month of March was three thousand twenty, which is pretty significant for the senior center. So I just wanted to share that with you. And now, the budget, I would like to pass this out to you, but my, I wanna introduce to you Sharon. We are very fortunate, the town of Islam Meadow has two employees, Sharon, she adore her, she, I'm not gonna kill it, these Italians, and her husband Joe, who works for the fire department. And I cannot tell you what a relief it is, has to have Sharon doing all the accounting and the bookkeeping for me. I think people don't realize how busy the senior center is, but when I say, how much do we deposit, probably every week?
Yeah, three, five to ten thousand.
You, you would never believe that, but that's how much accounting actually takes place in our department, and she works really well, I have to thank Denise and Sarah, because I was out doing the budget preparations, and Sharon was amazing, and Denise and Sharon were extremely supportive, walking her through that, so I have to give her kudos. So, I'm gonna just pass this out to you. This is just a percentage of the other expenses that we have, that the town does not cover, so you can see the effort that we've made to provide really good services without having to run the cost. Okay, you're awesome, you did it perfect. So if you look, our, our actual, our operating budget as far as all our expenses is a total of four hundred and seventy-five thousand, three hundred, but if you look at those percentages, so the town's portion of that is sixty-four percent, and so our nutrition program is completely funded by grants and donations, and what the participants are able to pay for their meals, that's the meals that take place here, and the Meals on Wheels that we do as well. The transportation, that is our tri-town trolley, that's twenty percent of our budget, and that is PVTA paying for a subsidy as well as a grant from Executive Office of Elder Affairs. And then our revolving account is twelve thousand dollars, so it's two percent of our budget that helps us pay for, subsidizes some of the staff positions, our fitness equipment, and then some of the programs that we bring money in, but we pay for some of the, the supplies and stuff that we need to be able to do those programs. So that's just an example, we just wanted to share that with you, that we do the best that we can to make sure that the town isn't having to take off the food portion of our servicing programs. So I think this is the exciting time, Sharon loves to be here, and she loves to be on the camera, and she loves to be around people. So, if you have questions for details, she'll be able to help, but again, thank you Sharon for all of your help. She's ready to kill me, but.
I know.
So, did you, you have the budget in front of you? What, did you want me to go through it, or do you have questions specifically? We really aren't asking for anything, I think it's an extra fourteen hundred dollars for our expenses, for the town's portion, and then their salary, that's probably the bigger increases is the salary. So, we have an added staff, it was just from the adjustment from the salary survey. And we did have to bring up some positions up to minimum wage.
Pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, yeah.
Any questions?
You have to, come on, you've been so nervous, ask something.
Share, run.
Thank you, thank you.
No, wait, no, you don't know how much work she did.
It's okay.
We appreciate your work.
That's why we don't have any questions.
No questions.
That's good, okay.
No questions, that's a good thing.
You're so mean. Sharon did do a great job filling in for Awesome.
You raised her welly song, that one.
All right, hearing no questions, thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Carolyn, have you seen that red folder?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, I do have. Leo would be so upset. No, I am gonna give out five, you guys can share.
I'll share one with Kevin.
All right. Your great Facebook, feed that.
That's right. What's the median age of the people here? He is, you're looking at sixty-five plus?
I would say the median age is probably seventy-five to eighty-five.
Seventy-five, eighty-five, okay.
But our volunteers will see. Oh, that was the other thing I did wanna bring up, the volunteers, we have over a hundred volunteers, and if you were to put a price tag on the work that they do, it'd be about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. She would have forgotten that, so, and we're doing a recognition on Thursday night.
Oh, that's right. Okay, we are now to planning and community development. Honey, help them.
One seventy-five. That is one seventy-five. Page six. If you please, I watched the basketball game last night, and I'm starting to fade. So, the purpose for the current budget request from the Department of Planning and Community Development is for salary compensation, department operating expenses, professional education, training and memberships, professional-related travel expenses, supported the celebration of Arbor Day in partnership between the Schools and Conservation Commission, and update of the nineteen seventy-six comprehensive master plan. Approximately eighty-seven percent of the total department budget will be allocated for salaries, which include the director, administrative assistant, and five-member planning board. Local assistance fee for fiscal year twenty twenty from the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission is twenty-six hundred dollars. Our regional planning agency PVC is an organization that assists its forty-three member municipalities at the local government level in promoting the region's interests at state. funding mechanisms to promote and implement planning initiatives such as regional transportation, housing, economic development, historic preservation, pollution control and management and protection of resources. Members of the Town of Islaan Meadow Planning Board are Chair George C. Kingston, Vice Chair Russell Denver, Clerk Ty Richards, Board Member Louis Morabito, and Board Member John Torsa. Designing Board of Appeals is comprised of Chair Mark McLean, Clerk Charles Gray, Member Frances Dean, and Member Brian Hill. Member Daniel Plotkin was appointed March 2019 for a three-year term and Associate Member James H. Channing was reappointed for a one-year term. Elections will be conducted during the May 13, 2019, hearing of the ZDA with new Vice Chair name, following the resignation of John Garwaki. One vacancy remains for ZDA Associate Member. The Special Commission of the Conservation Commission is comprised of Chair Craig Jernstrom, Vice Chair Robert F. Sheets, Clerk Jeffrey Bosworth, Commissioner Mary Ellen Goodrow, Commissioner Will R. Men, and Commissioner Anthony Zampuccini. The elements of the master plan include a goals and policy statement, land use plan, housing, economic development, nature and cultural resources, open space and recreation, services and facilities, transportation and circulation, and implementation program. After further research and discussion with peer planning professionals and consultants, staff asked the planning board to consider appointing a master plan subcommittee to engage the community's involvement and move the initiative forward. The planning board voted at the meeting April 2, 2019, to invite the town manager to solicit appointments of interested parties to this committee via press release and webpage notice in addition to the announcement by the planning board on April 7 and the announcement at this evening's town council meeting. Staff's objective for the master plan study, development, and implementation is to hold meetings twice a month during regular town hall operating hours, anticipating the committee will prepare a draft revision of the 1976 master plan within 18 months of the kickoff meeting. The goal is to produce much of the report in-house. Staff is hopeful to host charrettes at different locations around town so we may reach a cross-section of the demographic mix that comprises the constituency. Staff would like to foster community engagement by increasing our web presence, which provides materials and updates on progress, similar to what has been introduced by the Town of Lexington, Massachusetts. And I provided the link in your letter. We will look at funding mechanisms. In speaking with Emily Slotnick, Senior Planner at PVPc, I have been apprised of the following resources available for updating the master plan. District Local Technical Assistance, otherwise known as DLTA or Delta, LTA, Local Technical Assistance, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Land Use Planning Grant, and Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant. With approval by the planning board, staff is looking forward to submitting the Municipal Vulnerability Preparedness Grant with supporting documentation by May 4, 2019. I respectfully ask that town council support fiscal year 2020 budget request and approve the allocation of $153,638 and 30, $638 and 30 cents, which includes the $2,600 local assessment fee submitted by PVPc for responsible use as itemized under expense code and account description for Department Number 175, Planning and Community Development. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this request, respectfully submitted Constance and Broughters Planning and Community Development Director.
Questions for Connie?
Just a quick, when we're saying contractual issues and it was same in the Council of Aging, that wasn't all like union contract, was it just reassessing from the wage study?
It was, it was, it was all of those. It was union contract?
Yeah, because no contract, no union contract increased by 22%.
Correct.
Okay.
But there was, there was some adjusting of positions. There was the management, there was salary changes in the management side as well. There were some people, and I don't remember, in Connie's budget, it was merely the union positions that were changed by the, by the wage study. What it also did do is, is if you remember, we, we had not budgeted last year's salary increase. So, because we were still negotiating. So that's, that's why it's such a big one.
Thank you.
Any other questions? We're good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night.
Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And recreation, 630. 630.
Last but not least.
Enjoy.
Good evening.
Hi, how are you? Yes. Wow, this is cold color. Fun stuff.
Morrissey would be upset with himself right now.
He's going to do his phone call too.
Okay. Sure. No, I...
Work is budget season.
So, again, good evening. Jordy is handing out our newest summer brochure. As I talked about last year, I was thinking about going paperless because the registrations were staying so strong. But then we did some evaluating and looking at other towns that went paperless and, and you know, how registrations came up and down. And I got a little nervous because we're hitting the same users. And so we thought, well, we're going to come back with some paper, but we're going to limit it a little bit to just kind of even things out so we don't take too big of a hit and see total, a total drop in our numbers. Because right now, the numbers are really, they're going well. The spring, we are putting the final touches on coaches and rosters because we've had wait lists and we're trying to accommodate as many kids as we can. I think we're, the thing that's making me most anxious about our spring is the weather, as you can imagine, because we all want to be outside. So, Jordy worked hard on this brochure, so I'm going to let him take the lead on telling you a little bit about it and our summer opportunities.
So I know a lot of other departments talked about what they did in the past year and I kind of really just wanted to hit on some of the things that we're going to be working on for the future because we're really excited. So, like Donna mentioned, we're going to be bringing back limited printed versions of the brochure. We sent this out for print today and we're going to be uploading an interactive online version on Friday. So basically, what we're able to do is on our website, upload this exact brochure and on page two, the table of contents, if somebody wanted to click on, let's say, special events, it'll take them right to special events on page four. Or if they wanted to click on a certain special event, it'll link them to a page on our website where they can preregister, sign up for a program and whatnot. But one of the biggest things that we're, we're really proud of for this upcoming summer is our brand-new camp. So when I was hired about three months ago, one of the things I wanted to do was improve programming for all ages. And one of the things that I noticed was kind of lacking was teen programming. And that's really one of the ages where we need programming. So this upcoming summer, we're introducing, it's on page 10 in the brochure, it's called Extreme Teen Adventure Camp or XTAC for short. So what this program is, is a camp designed specifically for teenagers in grades six through nine. And there's a little calendar broken down by sessions and days of what kinds of trips they're going to be going on this, this summer. So Fenway Park, Yankee Stadium, Dave and Buster's, all things that, you know, teenagers in this age group are really interested in doing and they do it with their friends already, so might as well do it with a huge group of friends without their parents. So, all the information is there. And we're going to be running the camp 8:30 to 4:30 out of Pine Knoll, but we're really going to be off-site for most of the days. And Fridays, we're going to be onsite from 9 to 3 as a short day. And then some late days, mainly on Wednesday when we go to Fenway Park, the beach and those kinds of trips. And we're also working on a grant that's going to be upcoming next month that'll help offset some of the costs of this program as well. So that's really one of the things that we're working on as a department for this upcoming summer, the addition of new things. And another couple of things that we're adding on are, we're changing the way we do swim lessons. So previously, they were at, held at Pine Knoll and they went by ages and they still do. So this upcoming summer, what we are trying to do is do it by ability because we could have a five-year-old that could, has the ability to swim of a 12-year-old and we, there could be an eight-year-old that has the ability of a four-year-old per se. So we're going by ability and we're moving all of them to the high school and offering morning and later night sessions to make it inclusive for everybody, including the working parents. And pool passes, we're also going to be helping our lifeguards this summer. So we're going to be handing out physical pool passes to our participants if they don't register for camp and they wanted to go use the pool at our campground, they would be able to buy a pool pass and they get actual, an actual physical pass. And children would actually get a wristband. So the lifeguards would easily identify, because it's, it's tough to identify kids that want to just go use the pool with their parents and campers. So we have those wristbands available to identify who's there for camp and who's there with their parents, just in case any emergencies happen. So one of the last things is we're trying to, like I said, improve our program and expand our programming. So we're adding more special events, we're adding more bus trips, we're adding more summer programs like Minds in Motion, couple of those STEM types of, of programs. And we also took over scheduling for the Little Red Schoolhouse too, which is very exciting and we're hoping to bring a lot of programming into there. And, yeah, just a lot of upcoming fun stuff.
So going back to the budget, the, the town portion of our budget, the only change is in salaries due to contract agreements, some union anniversaries and step increases. And then Jordy's position was approved last July. We didn't quite get everything lined up until, like you said, a couple of months ago. So that did save us a little bit of money in that as far as this year, but then that will be full-time in the next year, coming up, budget year. The other piece that I wanted to mention to you, I know last year this time, we talked about the revolving counts, accounts and how we were working with those. Luckily, both Doc and Jordy and I talk Sarah's language, so I think we're doing pretty, pretty well with the, the budget piece. We've been meeting with each of the associations. This year, we've decided not to increase any funds because I want one more year to see how we're, how we even out with our projected and our actuals now that we're putting them by sport or activity versus the one pot. I know with swimming, we just recently went through the process with some swim volunteers and we decided to actually decrease the swimming costs and Sarah was okay with us actually giving refunds because we had started the registration process. So that was a, I think, would be a nice for the parents because they have two and three children in swimming. Lots of families have the same, I mean, have multiple kids in that program. Baseball, we went through that and we, we did a tiered fee. We talked a lot to the baseball association and they wanted some pretty nice jerseys, which made me nervous, but they, they said, the association said they would be willing to pitch in with their fundraising so that, to not raise the cost on that piece. Same with football. I wanted to say the same, even though we needed to recondition some helmets at the tune of about 1,500. But I talked to Dan Bean and again, he said, "Let's just keep it the way it is and if there's, if it doesn't shift out the way we want, then we'll come up with fundraising monies that's already, that already exist." Cheerleading came out, for instance, we had money and we were able to get new mats, which they hadn't had in years, so they were very excited. Basketball is the same thing. Travel, we were keeping the same. We changed the rec's structure and practice times. We actually decreased the price of that a little bit. And that's just the wave that we want to go. We want to keep matching up what we bring in, what we, we needed to pay out. Even with the cost increase of minimum wage, I still felt confident with the way we're looking at the budget, that we didn't raise the prices because of that also, so.
Questions for Donna or Jordy?
I'm just going through, I see senior discounts. What's the, what defines it? I didn't see the definition in the flyer. Is it, you know, 65?
You don't qualify.
Oh, I know. What, what would qualify to get the...
To get their reg's like that.
I know, I'm just kind of looking forward to save a couple bucks on the pool.
That's a good question. It's 60 and I don't know, just because that's the way it has been.
Okay. I was just wondering if they didn't define it, that's why.
Right.
And what's pickleball?
Kind of like tennis with a whipping ball.
It is. It's, it's very big in...
Smaller racket.
Yeah, it's, it's very big in Arizona and Florida and the snowbirds are bringing it back home. It's just a shorter court. So it typically, with seniors, they like it because it's, it brings the court in and it's not quite as much agility and running as tennis.
That's the demand for it.
Yes. In fact, the high school has a pickleboard, they, they went ahead and lined one of the courts for pickleball because of the demand.
They play it at the high school too.
I'm sorry?
They play it in Fizzette.
Yes, yes.
That was the first I've ever heard.
And they, and Virgilin also.
I wasn't the only one, okay.
To the chair.
Yes.
When do you expect to come back to get on the agenda, talk about banners, signage? I know we were trying to get on the agenda and then that got rescheduled.
Right. We...
Are you close to getting everything?
Yes.
We're actually having a staff meeting tomorrow morning about promotional, promotional packets and also applications that businesses can fill out for the different types of sponsorships they would want to contribute to. So special events or banners or league sponsorships, those types of things. So hopefully relatively soon.
We, we have, we have, yeah, a couple people already interested in purchasing the banners, but I just want something in writing, so we're consistent. And so that's what we're, we're doing tomorrow. I've talked to Kevin in planning and he, you know, he has an application and he said, "Just submit it to him and we'll go from there." So I think we're right there.
Good.
They've done a lot of research with what other, how other communities have tackled it, so that we have a real plan.
Right.
Yeah, and we have another meeting of our volunteer committee coming up. Hopefully, I got to email everyone back and look at that scheduled and could update the group. But there was also people that were saying that they had been approached by one of the local landscaping companies who wanted to kind of adopt a field.
Oh, great.
As part of our initiative to improve field condition and field safety and things like that. So I talked to Bruce quickly about that today, so he was pretty excited as well, so.
Right. I just, could I just add one more thing with the field? So we did talk to DPW and Neil and we were able to, with some of our revolving funds, to rent a Thatcher and a Edger. Because that's two pieces of equipment that we could get reasonably cheap for a day to help with the fields. So we're going to try to help out the rec, you know, department piece as much as we can in that department or in that area.
Yeah. Thanks for your support there.
Thank you.
Oh, I, can I just say one more thing?
Sure.
Sorry. I know. We do, we have an egg hunt coming up on the 20th. My goal was to have 60 families. We have 211 signed up as right now. So if anybody has any free time in the next week, I can give you take-home packets to stuff eggs because we're looking to stuff about 6,000 eggs.
Run away, huh?
6,000.
Yeah. And we ordered 2,000 that were already prepackaged, so.
But we, the, Crosspoint Church actually donated 6,000 eggs to us.
So now we just have to stuff them all.
Hey, we have a department head meeting next week.
Oh, yes. And the, and the seniors are going to help too.
Bring it, let the seniors will get a charge.
Yeah, oh yeah, the seniors.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, I'm done after this. I can't be outdone by Carolyn because we have a little healthy competition going. And last week, the rec department brought in $10,555. And in the last two months, we have $75,464.50. And our Facebook support is actually going very well and thank you for all of you. I know that, Don, that you've been really good about helping us push the Facebook. I'm not, I don't watch it quite as well as Jordy does, but... I'm not, I don't watch it quite as well as Jordy does, but I did, I did notice that, so thank you.
Thank you.
Great work.
One more? No.
That's it, we're done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we, all right, so now we're down to council budget discussion. Item B1F. Did you have anything else to add, Denise?
No, you and I talked about what departments to bring today and that's really, this is the last of them. The building department, the building inspector is still out, so we kind of talked about the budget right. You're aware, he's asking for an additional person. Brings in significant amount of money on the other side, so. But other than that, I mean, it, it's up to you all to, whatever questions you want us to answer, we're here.
Who's got questions?
I don't have any.
Question regarding the additional person, can that person also have zoning enforcement or code violation duties?
That's what it is, right?
Okay, it's not just to help in inspections?
Oh, no. It's, it's not to help with inspections, it is in-house staffing, more administrative because Kevin spends a lot of time doing some of the administrative stuff. He has, um...
Well, he could be out there doing it.
Yeah.
So the goal by this person is to keep that person on the inside doing all the bureaucratic work and Kevin's on the ground doing the inspections. Got it? Makes sense.
To the chair, I could use some clarification on what's going on with the DPW highway request. When we were looking at the capital plan, it was a hundred thousand dollars on the capital, but...
For streets?
Yeah, for, for highway. So has that been, have you guys, is it still in capital?
So...
Or has the increased amount been added to the actual budget? 'Cause I'm a little confused as to where it is now and how much.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be in the budget that you'd be increasing it and it is, your prerogative to increase the capital piece of the budget. Now, I think we've talked a little bit about doing specific capital projects that are recurring every year, sort of a, a separate way of doing the capital, right? Is, is that how we would do it? Rather than, it wouldn't be in the budget.
Well, it would be in the budget. It, it would show up at the very bottom where we have currently the OPEB trust, the compensated absences, it would show up similar to there, so down there. So capital is already, it's online, but then for instance, something like this, we would separately highlight in the...
No, go ahead.
I lost my train of thought.
So it's like OPEB, where you tell us how much you think out of free cash we can dedicate to OPEB.
Well, that's...
This, we would, the council would have to, with Bruce's help, identify a figure that we would...
Well, he passed out at the last meeting his wish list of streets, which is, you know, something for you all to work from, how, how much you wanna fund. I, I wasn't understanding that it was a separate line in the budget, but in, in any case, it's a segregated piece, similar, we talked about it for police cars as well because we do police cars every year. Should we be doing something different in how we fund police cars instead of making it a part of the capital projects that we need to do it every year?
So for the, for the streets, just to finish, I can put in the full amount of, for example, you could give a one-point-two million as an estimate for two years in order to get that done. So I could put in the one-point-two million, but if we're going to bond some of it, if the council really wants to head more towards that kind of a direction, that's gonna play an impact on the total operating budget and therefore on the tax rate. So depending how much you want and whether or not we're going to bond, whether it's a short-term funding right now and then long-term bonding later, that's gonna impact just how much I'm impacting the operating budget. I think some of what we're waiting on is to also understand how the council stands on many of our other areas or the, the other concerns to therefore figure out how to outline everything. If we're already concerned about the tax rate as is, adding one-point-two million is going to be a significant increase.
Understood. I'm looking at it like, you know, the, the reason why I wanna look at it as more of a multi-year project, because we, we can't, like, we're at the point where we can't delay. There's some roads that are in critical condition, they're not gonna get touched anytime soon. So we could just ignore it and pretend that we don't need to spend the money. And then what? It's like the main roads aren't getting done, the secondary roads are just like, you know, and there's a lot of them. And, and that list is like the worst of the worst, also including the fact that some of them, like East Circle and North Circle near where I live, need to be done, but they have to do the water mains first. So that's like a two, three-year-out project. So as bad as those roads are, he can't even put them on the worst of the worst list 'cause he can't repave them right now. That would be irresponsible to repave them and then rip them up to put the water main in, in two years. So the, you know, there's a lot of things working behind the scene and I'm, I'm looking at it almost, you know, kinda like what we did with some of the other projects where you're funding them, they're multi-year. You know, if we allocate two years' worth, one in this budget cycle, that, well, he's not gonna spend it all in one year, potentially.
Possibly.
So, so we can address this every year, we can come back and say, "The recommended amount is six hundred thousand, we're putting six hundred thousand in the budget."
Just like what we do for...
And if we then get to next year and we say, "Oh, there's too many things," and we cut it to a hundred thousand, then the little bit of progress we made is right back to in the gutter. So, so that's where I'm coming from. There's no easy way to do this. We're way over what I was hoping to be from a budgetary standpoint as is, but I, I don't know, I think that's a pretty important one that needs to be addressed in, in more than, you know, the, was it, the chapter ninety money plus a hundred thousand? He's doing a thousand feet of road with a hundred thousand dollars. That's it.
Part of the problem with what, what you're saying too, is by deferring the repair of those roads right now, will cost us more money later.
Later, right.
Yep, for sure. Absolutely.
Which is a waste of taxpayer dollars.
Rather defer sidewalks as important they are and put that money, if they could, unless it's already been allocated by the state or something, towards, towards roads. You know, that, I mean, again, I'm very pro sidewalk, but I'm, roads are something that they're, we have no choice, everybody has to go on roads. But I don't know where they could, they could pick another spot of the budget and defer some, you know, lots and put them, and add another hundred thousand into the road budget.
Well, with regards to that, the discussion about having the builders pay into the town rather than put in sidewalks in a cul-de-sac, some of that funds which we've been putting aside for years, seventy-five thousand dollars for a sidewalk fund, to fund sidewalks in a cul-de-sac. I mean, to me, it doesn't make sense. So we can maybe take that hundred and fifty and move it into this road, so now we got a quarter million.
If, if the funds were attributed for a specific purpose, you can't change it.
Yeah.
But they have a nice sidewalk in a cul-de-sac, buddy.
Right, but this year's...
Well, yes, if something wasn't already issued, yes, then you could do that, but if it's already been designated, we can't change it.
No.
No, that's part of it. Okay, so that's last year's.
Well, that hundred thousand dollar number needs to change because it's gonna cost us more money later.
Yeah, that's a small, that's a realistic figure.
So I guess, my take on...
It's like an arbitrary legal number that we used years ago.
So my take on, on the question is that the last council meeting, we ended discussion with, were four million higher than we were last year, so we need to cut. So I'm not adding to the budget until you all make decisions, recommendations, and then we have to put together a proposal. Now, if your direction is that we add five hundred thousand or, you know, six hundred thousand for two year, projecting a two-year amount, or one-point-two million this year and then there's a carryover of it or something, that's a direction that you give us and we'll figure out how to do it. But we haven't gotten a clear direction from the whole council that that's what you wanna do. I understand it's one of your priorities, but it needs to be, you know, what the council wants, so.
I mean, to the chair, I, I agree with, with Joe. I mean, maybe, you know, that's, safe streets, I mentioned, safe streets, schools, public safety, those are the highest priorities of the town. And, and I think we need to come up with a strategy that's not gonna overburden the town, but when we start getting situations where the streets are, that, you know, that's the first impression visitors have to our community. And if they go, if they find the streets in disrepair, they may not be as inclined to start a business or move in or do things like that. You wanna, and, and again, but the most important thing is public safety and I think we need to come up with some strategies to perfectuate that.
Well, I can tell you James Place, who replaced Roy, actually, he gave his notice, he got a, an offer for a much higher-paid position. So I talked to him today because I wanted to be sure that that's, was the whole story and it really is. It's a significant, significant amount of change in his salary. But he was saying, and he was coming from the outside. He isn't somebody that's been here all along and sorta got used to what the streets look like. And he said, "It's disgraceful, the condition of a lot of our roads." And he said, "Especially the subdivisions in the last maybe twenty years that were not done correctly. They are sub, subgrade and the residents here don't deserve that." And that's coming from somebody that's seen them closely, but, but also has the expertise to know that what you're saying is right.
Yeah, I mean, and, and what, I think from a planning perspective, to give, you know, our DPW the ability to look out two years and say, "This is what I can accomplish."
Right.
You know, because even though they're subbing it out, it's not, I mean, they probably couldn't get it all done in one season anyhow because of where we are and the money's not gonna start. It's, it's probably too much, but, you know, to plan it out over a two-year period to know that we're taking care of this and then he's working in his, his other, you know, capital stuff where he knows water mains are getting placed or other utilities, then he, we're, I think we'd be, you know, according to what his feedback was, that we'd be in a pretty healthy spot. You know, we'd be catching up on a lot of stuff. So, you know, whatever everyone else's pleasure is, I mean, it seems like there's some tolerance to look at it. I mean, it's not gonna help if we can't adopt everything and that, I mean, that's, wow, that's a lot.
So to that end, the, we're going to convene the budget matter subcommittee, probably next week. We're trying to, I'm trying to poll all the various members and find a common date. We thought we had zeroed in on this Thursday, but then two of the members had conflict, so their instructions, once they, you know, get themselves familiar with the information, is to probably look at this budget and take a first swipe at it to bring it down a little bit. And then it brings us back to the twenty-third to hear some of their input and go forward from there.
Perfect.
Makes sense?
Yeah, it does.
And so on the twenty-third, in addition to our normal business, we will have more budget discussion. I assume we'll interact with the subcommittee and maybe try to hone the number down a little bit and whatever other direction we have to give to the two of you, because on the twenty-nine...
We have to, I have to do a proposed budget.
You're gonna present the finished product, which then during the month of May...
Is yours.
Is ours to query, to, really to ask the harder questions of the departments and have the public hearing, or actually, can that occur simultaneously, the public hearing, where we ask the departments the harder questions if we have them?
I, well, you'd have to have the public hearing first.
Yeah, you do the public hearing, open right for public comment.
Right.
And we can ask some of our questions after that, when we get to the council piece.
The public hearing would be on my proposed budget.
Correct.
So now you're presenting it to the public to hear what they have to say.
What they have to say.
And then you can react to that with, you know, questions of departments or directions to us as to what to do.
Everybody good on that?
Yes.
All right, then moving to old business. The referral of, pardon me?
One guy that was here for that, wasn't it?
Oh, I asked him to.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
He wasn't gonna talk anyway.
We weren't speaking with him anyway.
No, I knew that, but I just...
Yes. Referral of zone change petition for zero-piece road to Town Council Planning Matters Committee. This is at the, after the discussion with Mr. Martin and his client around the request for the zone change. I spoke with our town council, Mr. Maynard, and asked for direction on what's the council's next step. And he said, "Do what you would normally do," and that's sent it to committee. And so that's all we're doing tonight. Don's aware of that, he will pull together the committee, do their due diligence and it'll be back to us.
Kathy, I just have one question for you. Do we have clarification for him, the case that's in land court?
That is separate from the case?
I know it's a separate piece. Taking action in...
I had, after talking to Denise and Kathy, I, with their permission, I called them directly and I said, "Are you sure that we..." He was fine with it, so.
I just, I know it came up, that's why I wanted to ask.
I was asking the very same question, good question.
So we're saying that's irrelevant to deferring this to...
That's the advice we're getting from our council.
Well, move it forward.
Forward.
It's irrelevant to move it forward, I think, but we were asking.
Oh, for certain.
Yeah, you need clarification before we make stuff like that. And can, can I just ask a question on the twenty-third? Do we wanna set a time for that meeting? If we're gonna have budget discussions, do we wanna...
Aren't we at five o'clock?
Five o'clock.
We said five o'clock till further notice.
Yeah, we're at five.
And, and I think it works better the way we did it this time, which is start the meeting at five, so that we can take things out of order instead of having budget at five.
So maybe at five, then we will get some feedback from the budget subcommittee, maybe that's the way to go.
I think we do a budget, I mean, a, a present, or recommendations from the budget subcommittee.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, at five, five to six, and then we...
That's, that's cutting it close, because I mean, we're, we're gonna have to meet twice to at least go through everything that we've presented with.
All right, well, but we're close regardless.
I mean, we're, 'cause we're gonna crunch that, that crunches down to the twenty-ninth, we have to be ready to present.
Right.
So I mean, we...
So we have to meet twice before the twenty-third.
Between now and the twenty-ninth, we gotta meet...
Yeah, at least twice.
Twice and present to the council somewhere between now and the twenty-ninth, might as well be the twenty-third, it's just gonna line the firing as it gets done, really.
What I had suggested at the last meeting was maybe you don't wanna do that, the subcommittee now, and they work on, on the budget, once it's proposed, which is the way it was done last year, if I remember correctly.
Well, I, I think with the budget being out of whack the way it is, I mean, we're looking at a huge, huge...
I think we need to meet at least one time.
Right.
They have to, they're skittering their heads around.
I'm sure we're gonna have to meet more than once, but we need to meet at least once to try to get it in the right direction.
Exactly.
Right, I mean, that's my...
On a different subject with Bruce, if, if money weren't an issue, I think a good place to start might be, what would he wanna fix in town and what would be acceptable to us? If I make an example, if you have five roads leading into the rotary and they're all messed up, I mean, we can't work on all five of them at once because you'd be shutting the town down. But it would be a good place to start to find out, you know, what we want fixed based on a level of priority.
The council doesn't have that. That's, that's not the council's authority to, to tell the work guy...
Well, it would help us to figure out how much money we wanna allocate.
He's already given you.
He gave us a list.
We're in the list. The capitalist has the, like, five roads and he wants them.
Yeah, we can't have the council telling.
So if we have that, that's an important piece of information.
Even though we can't tell him, he actually did that for, he did map it out.
Yeah.
He mapped out...
It should, if you have your stuff from last meeting, last budget session, it's not gonna cover.
It's not gonna touch it.
No.
No, it's, it's chapter ninety money and a hundred thousand.
He still created the, showed us his vision if he could do it.
If he has, if he gets what he wants or needs, not necessarily wants, 'cause it means he's got it.
It would be a big bite of the most critical stuff, though, that he can...
And that, where I'm going with it is I'm trying to correlate that into a dollar amount and it might give us an idea on how much above and beyond a hundred thousand we need to go to make, make it, make something happen, right?
True, yeah.
It's in, it's in your packet for last week.
Yeah, that was actually helpful. But, yeah, no, I see what you're saying.
So that's what we have to, yeah, that's what we have to decide as a group, right? Because.
Yeah, so I'd, I'd prefer to hear the recommendations of the committee next time we meet, you know.
Yeah, so that'll be their task. Okay, so then, thank you, Joe. If you have it from last week. Under new business summary, action items for the next meeting?
You have to take a motion. To, to refer the zone.
Oh gee, I'm sorry, mine.
To the second.
Make a motion, refer that to the zoning subcommittee.
What he said, oh.
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor to refer Zero P's Road to the Planning Matters Subcommittee, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay.